Okay. Today being February 11th, 2016 at 7:00 PM, I'm gonna call this meeting of the Arundel Planning Board to order, and I need a roll call.
James Lauer.
Ron McGinn. Rich Kohn.
John Hendrow.
Temporary Planner. Okay. We need approval of agenda. The items for approval tonight are the minutes of January 5th and 28th.
This is not 28th.
It's the 21st.
21st is the 21st.
Okay. We have two pending applications, RSU 201 MLV school expansion, a conditional use plenary site review, and Old Oliver Farms LLC conditional use application. We'll then be looking at the land use and subdivision ordinances. Item one will be a review of the LUX format change and schedule of public hearing date. Item two is a discussion on a proposed fire protection ordinance and modifications to the land use and subdivision ordinance. And item three is a discussion on a proposal to introduce equestrian centers and riding stables to conditional uses in the R4 district. We have a planners' report, and then we all get to go home.
Who to approve?
Second.
Question.
Yes, Marty.
On item two, under land use.
Yep.
Where are we going to pluck that in the format?
There is a spot in the format.
I didn't know we want to refer that as we're discussing it to the direct area. So that is being known that we're doing that as we said we would be doing.
Oh, okay.
You follow where I'm going with it?
I do, yeah. There is a spot in here in 5.7 that we've reserved for fire protection.
So can we make that?
Well, the ordinance hasn't really been crafted.
But this is where we're speaking of, so we're putting it reference to.
Okay. Yeah, we can do that.
I don't want to apply this application because it's a system application.
Oh, yeah. No, no, no. We're talking about where to put this in the land use ordinance.
Land use ordinance will be fire protection, then we'll have to put it in another place in the -- there are various places already in the subdivision ordinance that we plug into.
Yeah, but I'm saying for our index.
It's in the index.
Correct. So we have a reference on this where we're speaking of.
Well, for tonight's purposes, it's yesterday's.
I know, just say this is fire protection going to be in 5.7 and whatever, that's where I'm going at.
Okay, yeah.
If we finalize, I guess.
No, just a reference to where it's going.
I'm not sure that it's necessary. If you look at the land use ordinance, the table of contents, it references a number of different places that we would end up putting it in. So I think once we get it all done, we can reference it in and fit it in as part of the.
And then you looked at our other minutes, but it'll be noted where that's where I'm trying to go at.
Why don't we draw the.
Yeah, I think so, yeah. It seems premature to me. Any other discussion? Okay. Hearing none, we've had a motion to approve and a second for the minutes. All those in favor? Motion is unanimous. Okay. The only minutes that I have are for the workshop that we had on the 21st.
Right.
So if you all could review those.
One mistake, the only thing I could find a mistake is I wasn't there that night. I changed at 7:00.
I didn't think so. Was that before the meeting was?
The meeting was at 6:30.
Yeah, that was at the town.
Yeah, I didn't make that one.
Technically, we lost our corner in the chain last.
I don't believe we took any votes on that.
No, that was just a discussion.
Right.
Okay.
Okay.
So I move to approve with that correction.
I need a second?
Yeah.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any other discussion about the minutes? Hearing none?
No.
Oh, Jim?
No, no.
You're saying no.
Hearing none, all those in favor?
Yeah.
And one extension. Next item, pending application, RSU 201 MLV school expansion. A proposal to reconstruct MLV school campus renovation of portions of the existing building, 24,045 square feet of building expansion, and relocated parking and recreational facilities on a 9.59 acre parcel located in 600 Limerick Road, MAP 17, Lot 25 in the R2 district. RSU 21 is the owner applicant, and John Kaczynski of Powerment Associates is the owner's agent.
Good evening, how are you doing? So it's been a little while since we met, back in December. Since then, we met with the ZBA and received our variance for the lot coverage. We have exchanged Ds between the RSU and Arundel for land, so they're now the back lot as frontage on Limerick Road, and an equal portion of area was given to the school, so the area of the school lot is still 9.9 acres. The plan hasn't changed substantially. Today I've given you a reduced copy of the 201 plan, but just revised lands, substituting this kind of planners' comments, pinots for the red maples. They're a little bit more salt tolerant than the red maple, always a good choice, and they're also a very nice tree. Putting in ivy bodies instead of white spruce, and we have a honey locust in the common up toward the front of the building here. So that's the only change that we're showing. Again, we did add the free bracket hairs up the front of his last board common. Parking layout in the building really hasn't changed since the last time we met. So the other thing is we have our DEP modification to the side lot, which I gave copies to the planner, because another one's floating around somewhere, so there's a couple. It's thick, it's boring, but it's the permit. So here we're hoping to get your view or your findings back, and hopefully finding approval. I'd ask you for any questions or comments.
At least one change that jumped out is the extra bus lane coming in that wasn't on the previous plan.
The extra bus lane?
Yeah. In front of the existing building, there's a driveway going through.
This is the exist -- we have a temporary bus stop, that's always been there. We're just building it over the ditch just during construction, and that's gonna go away as grass.
Okay, because on the last one, this looks like, it doesn't say temporary.
Yeah, it says temporary one-way sign coming in.
Yeah, that's temporary. It was on the other plan set, this is the 20.1, if you look at the old 20.1 was there.
I didn't see the temporary.
So this is something we ran with M-DOT, we crossed it, so during construction, where this is all ripped up, we can get buses at the front of the school and that's it. This becomes a dead end, and this is just fire lane access, and there's a sprinkler room in there.
All right, good, thanks.
Okay, so that makes me curious. The sprinkler room is where?
It's right here.
Right there?
Yeah.
But there's not gonna, will the fire department be able to access that from any place?
Access the sprinkler room?
Yeah.
There's a door to it.
There's a door.
Okay. But they're not gonna drive a truck up or anything?
Yeah.
I remember asking that.
That's why we kept that.
That's why we kept that privately. That's why we kept that driveway now? I remember talking about that way early on, Rich, and curious as to why they left that, really and truly, and the primary reason, if I'm not mistaken, was because of access to that sprinkler room.
Right, and also allows fire access for bringing out trucks for fighting fire along the building, so we have good coverage of the building. The only thing, you don't have driving access, it's just this side along Limerick Road, but otherwise, most of the rest of the building has access by truck.
How's it gonna get there? This is where I'm confused about it, because this is the entrance over here.
Well, this is also a driveway.
Yeah.
This driveway's not going away.
Okay, I'm just used to the idea that that's one way.
Yeah, well, that's gonna be two-way now.
Well, let's put it this way, a fire truck can go either way it wants.
They go wherever they want.
If there's a fire, the fire truck's gonna go the wrong way and one way to get to the fire.
Okay.
But yeah, no, this is gonna be a two-way parking lot.
Okay, I answered my question, thank you.
No without the cube squirming the whole time. Also, that's where the fire department connection is.
Right.
The sprinkler system's right there.
Well, that's what, I figured that's where it was, and that's why I was asking about it. It doesn't look as if there's any way to get there.
Plus, also the fill box is there too, so the fill outlet is there.
Yeah, we have a couple of tanks up in the truck lot here that was put in this past summer for the sprinklerses. So the existing building is all sprinkled, and then that's gonna be extended into the new building.
Okay.
I still have an issue that goes way back, because we're dealing with two lots here, not just one.
Uh huh.
And at the very beginning, I mentioned my discomfort with that access, the frontage for the back lot.
Right.
Being that it's never going to be usable, I'm saying.
Well, it's frontage.
Let me finish.
Yep.
So since that is, that is frontage in name only, then we, in my mind, we still have problems with that back lot, even though they have a right-of-way on the driveway. The right-of-way is a legal agreement, which can be manipulated and changed and who knows what. I don't see why the RSU could not deed that driveway to the back lot, and the back lot owners, the town, can give right-of-way to the school. Because that way, the back lot would have permanent access and real access as opposed to virtual access.
It does have permanent and real access, because it's a.
No, it's a deed.
It's a deeded right-of-way, which cannot be reversed unless both parties agree.
Or?
No, unless the town and RSU agree to make it go away, it can't go away. They both have interest in that. It's deeded.
Well, this is a decision I think the board has to think about. I am very uncomfortable with it.
I mean, this has been reviewed by the town attorney and the RSU attorney.
You know, attorneys, attorneys play with the law all the time. That's not what I'm concerned about. I'm concerned about the fact that we don't have real access, that is physical access to the back lot. We only have virtual access.
It's real, it's always been.
And we have a legal access, but not a real access, where it could easily be done, and this, by the way, you've never come back to the board and discussed this with us.
We did discuss it.
And I brought it up also at the Board of Appeals, and of course, they were not ruling on that aspect of it, they were only ruling on the lot coverage, so they were not concerned with that. So again, comes back to us to look at that, and I don't see why you couldn't do this properly, give the back lot actual access, because even if that goes away for some legal reason, if, you know, whatever happens, the school still has lots of frontage and can always have access to the road, whereas the back lot is completely dependent upon what you're now doing as a deed, a deed in access.
Now, if you look at it before you knew we did this, Fields had virtual access over the NDOT land. There's a strip of land between Limerick Road and the access, so that access has always been over virtual land in your terms, but it's always been real because it's a deed. It's a recorded deed that both the RSU and the Town of Arundel have perpetual legal rights to cross that land. The MTA could not abandon that at any point unless the RSU.
There's no such thing as perpetual, and no such thing as.
It's deeded.
A deed that can't be undone.
Wow, but it's deeded.
So that's my concern, that's, you know, you.
It's basically a large end between both the MTA, the RSU, and the Town of Arundel to make that go away.
But it's not, it's not a physical access.
It is physical, there's a road there. It's paved.
Which is owned by the RSU.
Which is also granted easement to the Town of Arundel.
Well, but this is, this is the thing that I want to bring up to the board, for the board to think about, not so much for the RSU. I mean, if it was just a situation, sure, it's the school, why not, no problem, and it's just a ball field. What I'm thinking of, and I stated at the ZBA as well, is that this is a precedent, so that if we allow this kind of virtual access to a rear lot in this case, then we by precedence should allow it in other cases where we might not think it would be such a good idea.
But if you review your ordinance, there's nothing in it that says access shall be through the frontage. There's nothing there. There isn't, it's not there. So the frontage is the frontage, you have the.
But that's the purpose, it doesn't say that, correct, but that's the purpose and the intent of the ordinance.
But if you have access, you know, if you have frontage on one street and you decide to get right-of-way through another way because, you know, it's too steep or you prefer to come off a different road, you can say that you can't use that building.
No, but you still have frontage on the other street.
And they have frontage on the other street.
Wow.
They have frontage. They're just choosing not to build a road over there, and they're using the paved access on.
You cannot build a road over there.
That's the problem, Marty, we can't put a road there.
We could build through the wetlands, you just have to get a parent's permission for it, but it takes some money to build, but yeah.
And win the lottery at the same time.
Well, I mean, it's physically doable.
Practically not, but physically, yes, I agree.
Okay.
Okay, but that is my problem, and that's what I want the board to think about, because I've had that problem from the beginning, and, you know, I'm an individual, but I think it's something we need to think about.
Through the chair?
Yes.
If I can just provide a little bit more illumination to what John's talking about. I think one of the reasons why the RSU did not pursue that, because that was one of the better ways to get out of this issue, is because actually, we could make the setbacks, it would be tight in a few places. Well, we could make the setbacks from the building, because that would be a road, and you'd have to have front setbacks on them. The problem is that it would pretty much blow apart the whole plan, and the reason why is that in crossing, if we were to have a 50-foot access strip where the road currently is, where it's projected to be in here, then the land that basically, MTA, main term picket authority, has a spoiler strip that separates half of, well, actually more, most of the frontage that the school currently has, and they have the spoiler strip that separates Limerick Road right-of-way from the school land. That's why they could get that building as close to the right-of-way as possible, because, I believe it's what, 75 feet in the woods, right?
Yeah, 75 feet, but.
75 feet. That's why they could get that, the building that close to that location. It's only 35-foot setback, which is more than enough for a structure in the R2, for a side setback. But if that were to go across there and we were to cut that lot, we would create an illegal second lot.
Two illegal lots.
Two illegal lots, thank you. There would be two illegal lots that are nonconforming every possible way, which, in the event, then the town and the RSU, probably the town, would ask for, ask MTA to convey that property to the town, which would take forever, and then, frankly speaking, then the building would be made nonconforming. The existing building would be nonconforming with the zoning district, the existing, let alone the proposed expansion. So we would basically be creating that more nonconformity by doing that. That's why that wasn't.
Through the chair. But that, well, you could be right, but the fact of the matter is, nonconforming lots were already created, you know, so no matter what we asked for, it was already, before it even came to us, it was developed illegally. It was, it was, a lot was created without access, without frontage.
Right.
And the density on this is also illegal, so we're already, we're inheriting, we're inheriting two illegal lots. That's the way I look at it.
But now the lots are now legal.
That's, and that's what it come down to, it went through the Board of Appeals. I don't agree with it. I think it should have, it should have been thrown back, but again, it is the school, it is the town, who, what, no big deal, right? That's kind of how everybody's looking at it. With, so now the planning board is stuck with all these issues. I agree, a road is very unfeasible for a road to be placed in, it's just, it's very unlikely, so we are stuck with this the way it is. So having said all that, I think, I don't know if we can change this, I mean, this has already been through the appeals process, and now we have to.
It's, the only thing that went through the appeals was the variance to allow them to have more coverage, more impervious surface than was a lot. That's the only thing that went through.
Because the lots now are conforming to the ordinance. There is area and frontage for both lots according to the ordinance.
And they also have questions far as deeds go, that the MTA, the term picket authority owns that wedge of land, is that perpetuity or whatever that is, is that forever?
They own it, yeah, they own it.
But do they deed that, that will always be left the way it is?
Well, they can't do anything with it.
They can't do anything with it. They would have to convey it to the property owner, which would be, in this case, the RSU. That's the only way they can get rid of that.
And is a legal right-of-way that's been granted to both?
Yes.
Both the town and the school?
Yeah. So the legalese, the attorney's taking care of all the legalese, we've got right-of-ways, it's deeded, it's recorded, just like any other right-of-way.
Yeah, but what I don't like, I don't know if this is kind of where you come from, John, it's where I feel, it's like, this was a done deal, it was illegal, and I pointed out that when we first saw this, like, who was responsible for this? It couldn't have been a mistake, because attorneys are a little smart at that, but let's make a mistake, and then we'll.
No.
Then we'll fix it later.
It goes back, it has to go back to the original RSU, when the SAT 71 and Arundel wanted to become part of RSU 21, they had a committee to develop this plan, and part of the plan was school against the front half, town against the back half. That was written years ago, before the RSU even existed, and then decret the RSU, that plan through the state reorganization for the school districts became part of what's the requirements for the RSU creation.
When was it deeded that way?
They caught up with the deed when we sat and looked at the plan, and the survey picked it up, I guess, and it was done this past summer, but the original start of this whole thing was the reorganization plan for Arundel to become part of the RSU.
Well, at that point, was when the mistake was made.
That's when the mistake was made, yes. And that's why it was the zoning Board of Appeals to get the variance for the lot coverage, and also why the RSU and the Town of Arundel swapped land to get both lots legal for frontage and area, and so now the lots, to make it easy for the board, to so you have a legal lot for both of them, and you have frontage, and you have a variance for the coverage, so that all those issues are now cleared up for you. And all you have to deal with is the other performance standards in your ordinance for the land use ordinance of lighting, stormwater, and so forth. So all those other technical issues you can take care of by the variance and by swapping of land.
The basic question that I want the board to think about, you know, it's not so much who did what when, I mean, that's water under the bridge, but in terms of the legality of that back lot with the frontage that it has, do we accept that frontage if it's nonusable, if it doesn't really give us reasonable access to the back lot? Because as the ordinance was written, that was the purpose of the frontage requirement, to give access to the back lot.
But John, the back lot never had reasonable frontage, need reasonable access from that frontage.
Doesn't matter whether it never had.
It never had, I mean, it hasn't changed.
Doesn't matter. Do we want to accept it as legal access to the back lot?
I'd like to look at the actual wording for what that frontage required, did that?
It just says frontage, it doesn't require, in the ordinance, it doesn't require usable frontage.
So.
That's why we're here as board.
I'm sure, it, everybody would think you'd use that frontage.
Hang on for a second. Ted?
Yes, access strip, a contiguous strip of land with minimum width of 50 feet, that is owned in feet, within a state lot, and provides legal road frontage on a public street approved private way. There's nothing about it being used as a sole.
Well, but legal road, road frontage.
That's true, but I.
And private way, a private way is used.
I think I really want to hit this point across the board, that legal frontage does not require somebody to use that frontage for driveway. I have many situations in the town where I have a common driveway for two lots, which both have legal frontage, but they've decided they're going to have a common driveway. And frankly speaking, we've approved a number of acts of these types of state lots, in many situations where we have, quite frankly, family divisions or statutory divisions that were, or I should actually say multiple units on a single parcel, that when they go to subdivide or they go to liquidated for either tax purposes, stating purposes, or just to get a kid through college, we find we can't. And so we've actually used, we've used legally the estate lot as a way of making the lot legal, while still supporting a common driveway or a common private way.
Right. You're saying that the road frontage does not have to be used, that the owner is not required to use it as access?
That's right.
But my question is, should it be usable as access?
It's a darn good question, I think, John, that's something the board should ponder. We've used it as a safety valve to solve problems, but is that the, is that the long-range intent of the board? And if you want to make sure that the state lots in the future don't continue to be an excuse to develop bad land that doesn't have secondary means of egress by the access strip, then that's something that a few words in the ordinance would change, and would say that is the required access strip for the property, that that is the required means of egressing and ingressing into the property.
But logically, it's obvious that that would be the purpose of the access strip. Why else would you require it? Just because? No.
Not to make, not to make the surveyor happy.
No, I mean, that, you know, logically, that would be the reason to require the access strip, and I know when we wrote that ordinance, that was the discussion that we had.
I would say that was the intent.
So that was the intent, even though the wording per se doesn't specify that explicitly. So again, you know, it's a problem I personally have, I don't think it's the right way to do it, but this is for the board to decide.
Through the chair.
Yeah, Marty.
It says that we, the planning boards, have done different things. Is it the planning board, or has it been staff review? Well, you said, John, it's been so many landmines that have been used to correct things.
Well.
Because, John, you say the planning board, we haven't had any subdivisions or anything else along the way of family estates.
Well, I didn't say the planning board had done this.
That's the way it came out, it was us?
Well, if I gave them a misimpression, I apologize, because, hey, when I say us, I was actually referring to staff, because there's been a number of situations. Understand that, that most of the divisions that are occurring in this community are not basically legal subdivision, I shouldn't say legal, excuse me, aren't subdivisions that require review by the planning board. They don't meet the threshold requirement for planning board review. They're usually done by divisions, either family divisions or statutory divisions, meaning they, somebody's cutting off a lot every five years, as permitted by the state ordinance and our own subdivision ordinance. And so these things cross our desk at staff. And so these things cross our desk at staff in order to get building permits or when appraisers and loan officers come in and find out whether or not it's legal. So they make these divisions, most of the divisions are made by attorneys, quite frankly, in those situations. And they come in and basically ask staff whether this meets the legal requirements of the ordinances. And even though you don't review these divisions, they still, and they're exempt from having to go through the subdivision process, they still have to meet all the dimensional requirements and all of the performance requirements of the zoning ordinance. And that's what staff spends a lot of time doing.
Okay, if they're meeting performance standards, okay, then this isn't meeting, their road is not meeting performance standards.
Well, the question is, what performance standard? What performance standard are they not meeting? That's my question.
The problem is it's not written, it's implied.
And even though it was our intent to say that that access strip was going to be the means of getting back and forth on that piece of property, we didn't put it down on paper.
Yeah, it was a skyhook.
But the back lot has been granted access via an easement, which, you know...
Yeah.
It's not like we're in a situation where the back lot has got to go and find access at this point. I mean, they've got it, they've secured it. So, I mean...
This is just a line of paper.
Right, the whole front, and I mean, furthermore, I'm not sure if it's really our jurisdiction to scrutinize a lot division line that has, you know, the planner and code enforcement officer has looked at things and deemed the back lot legal, that it's within our purview to scrutinize that because it's not a subdivision. It's a split of a lot into two by, you know, two parties. And that's not, that really is, in my opinion, is not in front of us for review.
That's a good point. And I would also like to add that, as John knows, the planner and the code enforcement office were uncomfortable with this solution. We've heard some other solutions, but this one, we can't argue, because Frank, quite frankly, meets the standard. Going through the middle or the tritium extreme is not my idea of a reasonable use, but you couldn't, and I agree that you couldn't put her up there. I don't think you statutory can do it either in the shoreline zone, because this is a shoreline zone, nor can you do it in, it's a flat plain and a shoreline. So we have multiple problems, not to mention the engineering problems and the permitting problems John's mentioned. We have a number of regulatory issues. But the fact is, they need the criteria. And I think we would be hard pressed if we were challenged on that. If we repealed on this, I'm not sure that we would prevail, quite frankly. Otherwise, I would have advised the board otherwise, and I would have advised the town and the RSU. Plus, I should also, this big question about who screwed up, I'd like to just address that really quickly. There is something that I don't think you gentlemen have to deal with, we deal with it a lot because we deal with attorneys a lot, but there's this concept called the bundle of sticks. And basically, as far as real estate attorneys are concerned, there's no difference between a right of way and an easement. As far as land use attorneys are concerned, there's a huge difference between a right of way and easement. Because to us, and this planning board and land use attorneys, a right of way is, in fact, just like an access strip. It is a piece of land with needs and bounds that is separate from, and it creates lots everywhere it goes. Anywhere it goes through a piece of land, it divides property. That's how we consider it, and that's how most land use attorneys, from the real estate standpoint, they consider a right of way to be an easement. So when they did this split, they provided perpetual easement using the existing road and to them, not at all the usual criteria of access. It just didn't meet our ordinance close enough, so to know that land use has a different definition for that. So that's how this occurred. I don't think there was anything intentional or nefarious. It was a different understanding of the term.
Yes, Marty.
Through the chair. If that's the case, okay, as anything else, under that easement or whatever you want to call it, under fine lining, does it also have a utility use? Because other, because...
I believe the utilities were in there.
Yeah, it covers everything.
Yeah, I think it was a standard easement.
And part of the easements is also giving the town access to the parking lot and the school.
I'm talking about the back lot to this road, because you can turn around and have an easement going to the back lot, and if you don't have availability of utilities, it's useless to turn around and get anything back there.
Absolutely.
Because I've run through that with Taltros before.
No, they went through, they got back and forth easements. The school's septic system is on town land, is an easement for the school to go in there and maintain and whatever the septic system. There's not access for the town to use the school facilities, it's back and forth.
All right, Mr. Chair, one other question. How does this all affect if turn around and Arundel decides to withdraw from the RSU?
Couldn't tell you.
That all of this has to be reversed.
Couldn't even begin to tell you, Marty.
I don't think we'll make a difference.
I'm not looking at the crystal ball on that.
Why not?
Because I can't see that one.
Because we've seen the RSU, we've seen the RSU, not on this particular matter, but they've reneged on other things along the way to their convenience.
It probably wouldn't matter, because it's owned by the RSU, and if we pull out, they still own it. I don't know if we...
So we all own this?
Well, no, what I would imagine would happen was that, when, if the RSU, if we were to pull out of the RSU, then in that separation agreement, the piece of land here that the RSU owns would be reverted to the Arundel School Department or whatever, you know, whatever other authority it had built.
And that would be worked out, it would have to be impaired.
And that would be the same way that we transferred it over to them originally.
Yeah, that was part of the whole organization, part of the RSU, the school property, the school trump, and that was part of the agreement, you've got the RSU and the field. You know, the simplest thing would have, you know, the RSU taken all the land, and that way it wouldn't have any issue.
But that's a crystal ball, I can't look into it.
But you can look into the legal obligations and for the financial commitments that are made.
My thoughts on this are, I agree with John. I don't like the fact that we can't put a road in there, we don't have appropriate access. But I, and everybody else knows, I'm looking at the ordinance and I'm saying, this is what it says. And what it says is that we do have an access strip, we can get back there, we have a legal right to. It is deeded to the town, the only way, you explained it, the only way to get rid of it is for both the town and the school to agree. If the town doesn't agree, and the school wants to get rid of it, too bad for the school. And it's the same on the other side. I may not like it, it meets the letter of the law. I can't see where we could say no.
And the other thing is, I don't like the subdivision or residential uses between the field and the school, we're not going to change. The line is going to be invisible after...
Well, if the town decided they wanted to get rid of that piece of land out in the back and do anything with it, the only way somebody else is going to get there is if they put a road in. I don't think that's going to happen.
Right, well, that's again another what if.
That's right, that's a what if.
You know, and that has to be addressed, again, for this board at that time.
At the point, yeah, I mean, if we put some residential development back there.
Yeah, that's just another what if and how you get there.
Yeah, and looking at the ordinance, the way it sits right now, that meets the definition of an access strip. I don't see where we can...
It meets the definition, I agree with you there. But part of the board's job is to interpret the ordinance. And a number of us were on the board when this ordinance was written and understand the intent of that particular clause. So that's where I'm coming from.
And I agree, and I think the intent was that that access strip, that 50 feet where we cannot put a road, is what we had meant to have for egress and ingress to get to that back lot.
Should it be needed, right.
We didn't put it down on paper that way, so that's shame on us because we didn't do it right.
Wait a minute, Rich, but didn't we say something along the way, along that lines, that it had to be able to be usable and be able to turn around and be able to use fire trucks or anything else with any base and for pollen purposes or anything else, and it had to have cutouts? And that was part of how we described it?
I do not remember, I simply know what I see when I read the ordinance.
I'm just saying, that was part of the stipulations, how we had it described.
I think you're thinking of private way.
As opposed to the access strip. I just, I don't see it in the ordinance, and that's, I think our intent was that that was to be that access strip, that 50-foot strip that we were saying had to be there, was the means of access to that back lot. We didn't spell it out in the ordinance.
But we said if it was so long or anything else, it had to be usable to get to the back lot. Because you're not going to use a skyhook to get back there.
Marty said that, but we didn't put it into the landmark.
We didn't put it into the landmark, that's the problem.
We're having all of this discussion, but this could be easily solved by reversing this and making the current drive deeding that to the town. I mean...
Sure, we still have the MTA in between.
Yeah, but the ZVA can give you all kinds of...
Well, there's just another, there's another access even though of MTA land, is you still don't have that access on your frontage. And then we create, if we do cut that, take that through the MTA, then we cut off two different lots from the MTA that are both illegal. It makes it messier. Right now...
Not much messier.
A lot messier, because then we have the illegal lot with the MTA. So now we have a ZVA variance for the coverage.
You'd have to deal with that.
Part of your land use ordinance has now been satisfied. And the lots technically meet your ordinance as far as frontage and area. And the state lot for the back lot for the fields, and a frontage and area for the school. So again, they're technically legal lots according to the ordinance. So there's very few sticking points according to the ordinance. The only thing that's really, that you've got to go through is go through your approval criteria for the site plan for the school.
Well, just to move forward, I'm going to make a motion that we accept the lot lines and the right of ways or easements, whatever we want to call that, as presented. I think we're stuck with it.
Yeah, I'm not sure that it requires a motion to accept it, because that's what the plan is and that's the way it is. Before we get to that point of accepting the plan, we should make sure that there are no other items that need to be addressed. Because if there are other items that need to be addressed, we should get that taken care of and then decide whether or not we move forward from that.
Well, I would like to have a vote from the board as to whether they will accept the proposed road, what is that called technically, Tom?
The access strip.
The proposed access strip as a viable access strip to the back lot. So I will make that motion.
Without requiring...
I have an existing motion. That was a motion?
That was a motion.
They did a second thought, so...
Okay, well, I thought you withdrew that, so...
Oh, okay.
So I took it here a second and withdrew.
You want to make the motion, or you made the motion that we accept the proposed access strip as a viable access strip.
Okay, as long as we're just talking about the access strip and nothing else?
Yeah.
Okay.
We're not talking about the rest.
As long as we're talking about the access strip, okay.
Go with, John, do you repeat that? I wish to...
You're making, you're making a motion.
No, here's your privilege, so you make the motion.
Oh, okay, so, well, I was going to make it in the reverse. So I want to make a motion that we do not accept the proposed access strip as a viable access strip to the back lot.
Is there a second to that motion? Okay, the motion has been made and seconded.
We did the second, Marty.
All right.
That we do not accept the proposed access strip as access to the back lot.
Because it's not usable.
Okay.
No, not as access, as a viable access strip.
Is there any other discussion on this point?
Yeah, a few things. One is, I'm hearing the MTA issue, so now you have, you have need, we would be requiring some type of easement through two properties. I don't know of that.
We have an easement right now.
As, as exists, but...
I would caution that we are potentially getting into territory that we don't have purview of. If the lot is a legal lot and that has been approved by the town, then I don't see how that really is the jurisdiction of the board in reviewing a site plan. This is not a subdivision where we are debating boundary lines and things like that. That has been created. Whether we care for the way that they've been created or not really is a moot point, because we don't have any, that I'm aware of, any real jurisdiction to determine where two property owners create a boundary line between their two lots. So...
I would disagree with you on that.
So let me make a promise, you have a neighbor. And you have a large piece of land and decide to strike a property line and give that person some land of yours. Does the board have jurisdiction to dictate where you can strike that line?
Yes.
No, and yes, if you are creating an isolated lot, you have to, by the ordinance, and the board presides over that ordinance, you have to allow access, this access strip, to the main thoroughfare.
And I think they've done that through the legal frontage and by the easement. So I mean, I just...
But the access strip has nothing to do with the easement. It doesn't say and/or, it says you need an access strip.
And frontage doesn't say usable.
It doesn't, but again, I go back to the intent of that ordinance and when it was written.
And the intent probably was to make sure you had access to a lot. And the frontage may not do that, but they've provided other means in order to accomplish that goal.
But then it should say and/or.
Then what should say and/or?
Then it should say, then it should say, an access strip or other legal access.
You mean our ordinance? So then we should correct our ordinance? And that this whole debate really doesn't have any real merit on this site plan?
Yes, but also two in between that, if you didn't have frontage, you can't have access to a back lot. Because if you required frontage.
So if you didn't have the frontage, the lot wouldn't be conforming to Starcliff. But they have the frontage. I mean...
Yeah, the ordinance does not say legal frontage.
It does not?
It says frontage. Or accessible or negotiable. It does not say that. If that's what you want, you can change that, but in this situation, the CEO is pretty much...
But again, in the situation where the text is vague, my contention is that it's up to the board to clarify and make a decision on that text.
It could be argued that they have met the letter of the law.
Yes.
If not the intent, so...
But that's why we're a board, and that's what we're doing.
And I would say they've met, they've met both.
Okay, so, we have a motion and a second.
And again, to clarify, the motion is not to accept the proposed access strip as a viable access strip.
Mr. Chairman, before we do that, I'd like to just refer to the responsibilities of the CEO. If I can find it, the old ordinance, it's easy to find in the know one.
Yeah, but you made it, so you're the one who reshuffled everything.
No, I'm saying the old ordinance, I can find it. It's easy to do, and it's in the index.
You guys don't have name things, like the...
No.
You know, we normally...
I'm Mark J.
I got you, you got it all over you.
Yeah.
We normally do, and I don't know where they are today, they got lost in the shuffle stuff.
Can I pass a paper down and have you all just save this for the class in the back of this? back of this just?
That's my, uh...
Oh, that's yours.
Yeah, right?
Sorry.
Pass it there.
There's a few papers.
Yeah, start there and then they go around, please. Thank you.
Anyway, see, we do it, she knows how to draw her name right.
That's right. Print it too, please.
I did.
Okay.
If I don't print it, you won't be able to read it.
I can do that too, you won't be able to.
That's for IRS purposes, isn't it?
Yes, it is.
I got a little map drawn out and I'm putting it like this with comments over it.
You put furball behind me, yeah.
Find it?
Yeah.
Of course ours is different than anybody else's in the world. It makes us special. Yeah, because it usually says that the code enforcement officer is the official interpreter of the ordinance.
But ours doesn't.
Well, it says his, it says his duty to enforce the provisions of the ordinance, which brings the implications that he interprets the ordinance, but doesn't say it strictly.
Okay, so, we have a motion?
So where does that stand on your question?
We have, we have a motion and a second that would...
Yeah, I put his name up, yeah.
Are you okay?
I'm new here.
Say, say it again. I want to make sure, I want you to state it so that we get it right.
The motion is that we do not accept the proposed accessway as a viable accessway.
Okay. The motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Of not accept.
Of not accept, accepting. All those in favor of the motion?
Right.
The motion is defeated three to two.
Were the other three in favor of, or, I guess, yeah, never mind.
You're right, you're right.
All opposed, right?
All, right, all opposed.
Right, we have no abstentions.
So the motion is defeated three to two. So we will accept that plan with that access strip. Okay, are there any other questions to the applicant about the project?
Now, I, you know, other than this little burr under my saddle, I think you've done an excellent job with the plan and with all of the documentation required, so I'm very happy with the rest of it.
Yeah, I got a question. What is it, show about the streetlight, like the entrance there?
That's on our utility plan. We have it all over there with the light on it. I only brought the, the ride landscaping plan. We submitted previously to the...
Just ask the question.
What's the show in your plan set?
Your plan set, lighting plan, is, is a...
Good one.
It's the, it's the, it's twenty-one, C twenty-one.
Yeah, I got one.
I'd like these better.
Do you have size?
We don't. It's really nice.
And you're going the forty-foot line and the...
I think these are seventy-four. Seventy-four? Yeah, I do have seventy. No, I don't have seventy.
Well, mine goes from one to thirty.
Photometric?
No, you don't. Yeah, I don't have a previous plan set.
Who brings, because I don't have.
I didn't bring a, a, a G ball. Yeah, mine goes from twenty, thirty, skips right over to one.
It's, it's two.
Utility plan is forty.
Forty foot one, yeah.
Forty, okay.
I'm, I'm not seeing...
It doesn't call it out at forty.
There's a utility pole right there in the corner.
It's a utility pole. Will I be on that?
I'm pretty sure it is.
As the engineer, will I light be on that?
I'm pretty sure there is. I, I...
There's not one, there's not one indicator.
I specified.
There's not one indicated on the site utility plan.
Right.
Okay.
But the utility plan doesn't show any of the other lighting either.
And the lighting plan doesn't show it.
Got the poles, and that does show. Where's the lighting?
Lighting plan is C twenty-two, twenty, point two.
It doesn't have a light, it doesn't have a light.
There's no light reflected in that area.
I thought we all had on it.
It was on, it was on seventy.
It was on the seventy.
It was on seventy. Because that's where the photometric was. I wonder if I had some, I did run a couple of them.
On the, on the site lighting plan, it doesn't reflect any lumens in that area.
Okay.
Yeah.
You had a good man.
Well, it does for a little bit.
I don't see any, it's all zeros.
Point nines. Well, it depends on where you're looking, but is it the light pole or the light pole?
Well, we're going to be just like the white with no lights.
So, oh, there's no light.
Not down here, because it's up here by this light.
Yeah, that's, yeah, we wanted one down here.
We have a condition without a light.
Yeah.
If you needed on the plan, we would be conditionable. Apologize for the wrong effect. All right, you get everything?
Well, it's a place that you know I didn't have one. You weren't over point five on the property, point two once.
Yeah.
He is in compliance with the ordinance, guys.
I have one.
Now that light would be within, okay, that's on your, that's on your, that's on your line, so that's your, your meter on that.
Mm-hmm.
What's that, the eastern entrance?
Southeast door.
So.
It's a solid next.
Actually, kind of so, southeast.
We'll just call it south. We got a south and a north.
Okay, so we can put a line with the south, south entrance, okay. Is there anything else?
Uh, I, I don't know if it matters that much, but it's, it's not too much about the, the septic, the leach field and...
That's out in the, in the fields.
Yeah, it's not even...
We had that investigated. We gave you the letter from the original package. It's been evaluated and it's functioning fine.
All right.
So we're not changing it.
Right.
Flow's about changing, but it's just, the same number kids.
The only thing I see is approximate location.
If I remember, it was actually higher than the required capacity.
Yeah, yeah, it's, okay, you know, DEP asked about that, and again, we got from Health Engineering a letter saying that since we're not changing the flow or whatnot, it's, or doing anti-septic system, it's acceptable.
Yeah, it's been on the capacity for a while.
Yeah, it's, it was designed originally for like eight hundred students under the original eighties code.
Yeah, exactly. You don't have any students, students aren't using it as much. It only makes sense.
I guess the rest of it, but every summer, for instance, you know, it doesn't get as much used as some.
What, smaller bladders?
Okay.
What about water?
Any other questions?
What about water?
Water's in the well, on site well.
Yeah, but, and it's that, I mean, that was originally testing at one time and another, of it, either with arsenic or without arsenic and...
They have the filters instead.
Yeah, it's all remediated.
Okay.
So, gentlemen, what's your pleasure?
Go ahead, Academy.
We have to go through, find the fact. We have that. I just want to make sure that everything else is covered before we do any further analysis.
We have our public hearing.
No, we've already deemed it complete. Yeah, this is, this is the final.
How could we deem this completed until we just had?
Well, you deemed it complete on October twenty-second.
Right.
And you had your public hearing on November tenth.
But the lawyers just got finished jacking things around, so how could it be completed until utility of the lawyers turn it on, jockey everything around?
Well, because that was basically, they had everything they needed to have a complete application when you deemed it complete. It didn't mean it was, it was in conformance. I mean, you had everything you had at that point to make a decision. The decision could have been no, denied.
They weren't in the package.
And it would have been denied, because there's no access to the back, and then we had, there was excessive coverage. But the board, as you recall, discussed this with the applicant. The applicant said, "Well, work on that and get a solution to it sweet on that." And the board decided they would continue, made a motion to continue to review this, and instead of the public hearing date, knowing that the, after the applicant indicated which direction they were going to go and had scheduled their ZVA meeting, so basically you did your public hearing and made sure that you got a public hearing.
But these were given out at last minute, okay? That's why you...
Yeah.
Okay, well, I'm sorry.
So, so, motion for approval with the addition of a streetlight at the southern entrance to the, to the southern project.
We'll go through the findings of fact, then, because we have things that we have to vote on each individual.
Right.
Okay, findings of fact and motion for approval, RSU twenty-one Mildred L-Day Elementary School reconstruction. Whereas on September twenty-fourth, two thousand fifteen, the Arundel Planning Board received a conditional use pre-application from RSU twenty-one to reconstruct Mildred L-Day Elementary School campus, including renovation of portions of the existing building, twenty-four thousand forty-five square feet of building expansion, and relocated parking and recreational facilities on a nine-point-five-nine acre parcel located at six hundred Limerick Road, MAP seventeen, lot twenty-five A in the R two district. Whereas on...
Question.
Yeah.
Sensitive, when did we become a campus?
It's a school campus.
It's a school campus, yeah. Whereas on October eighth, two thousand fifteen, the planning board conducted and advertised public sidewalk on the premises. Whereas on October twenty-second, two thousand fifteen, the planning board accepted the conditional use application as complete. However, the planning board noted that the proposed site improvements exceeded lot coverage maximums for the residential two district and the back lot MAP seventeen, lot twenty-five, retained by the town lacked the legal frontage on Limerick Road in conformance with the Arundel Land Use Ordinance. Whereas the applicant explored different options to resolve the non-conformance with the land use ordinance and proposed seeking a variance from the Arundel Zoning Board of Appeals. Whereas on November tenth, two thousand fifteen, the Arundel Planning Board conducted a public hearing on the proposed project in conformance with section nine-point-F-point-one of the Arundel Land Use Ordinance. Whereas on December sixteenth, two thousand fifteen, the applicant received a variance from the Arundel Board of Appeals for a variance of up to forty percent lot coverage on the parcel. In addition, the town of Arundel and the RSU twenty-one conducted an exchange of land on lots twenty-five and twenty-five A respectively, such that lot twenty-five retained a fifty-foot access strip for legal access to Limerick Road and lot twenty-five A retained its original nine-point-five-nine acreage. Therefore, the Arundel Planning Board has arrived at the following findings of fact. Findings of fact, number one, the applicant and owner of the property is RSU twenty-one. Number two, the property is located at six hundred Limerick Road, tax MAP fifteen, lot twenty-five, in the R two district. Number three, the property was originally a twenty-five acre parcel owned by the town of Arundel, containing the current ML Day Elementary School and its associated parking and infrastructure, as well as municipal athletic fields and undeveloped land to the north and west. Number four, as part of the school consolidation agreement, the town conveyed nine-point-five-nine acres of land to the RSU twenty-one containing all of the existing school, its parking and access road. A perpetual access easement was granted by the RSU twenty-one to the town in order to continue using the existing road for access to lot twenty-five from Limerick Road. Number five, the applicant intends to renovate the northern half of the existing school building and demolish the unstable southern half and rebuild a twenty-four thousand twenty-five square foot replacement. Total footprint of the completed structure will be forty thousand two hundred ninety-five square feet. The applicant intends to relocate all parking facilities to the east side of the new building, including one hundred and four parking spaces, a separate bus stacking lane, a drop-off and pickup area, and improve sidewalk circulation. Number seven, the main entrance to the complex will be shifted to the, to the east of its present location and will have adequate site distance and turning movements as documented by a report conducted by Garrel Palmer and dated September nineteenth, two thousand fifteen. The existing rear access to the western portion of the property from Limerick Road will be retained for emergency fire access and maintenance purposes. Number eight, the applicant has received an easement from the town of Arundel to continue utilizing the existing ML Day School septic system on lot twenty-five, and has full rights to make all necessary repairs and maintenance of said system. Number nine, water supply will continue to be provided by the existing onsite well and the existing offsite septic system will continue to be, will continue to be used for sewage disposal. Number ten, the applicant has designed a complex storm water management system and treatment facility that will not increase peak runoff rate during the site during the five, ten, and twenty-five year storms. Number eleven, a new lighting system has been designed for the parking lot, for the parking areas, sidewalks and grounds, and the photometric mapping has indicated that it meets all of the lighting standards of section seven-point-five of the land use ordinance. Number twelve, solid waste will be stored in a dumpster and will be removed by a private contractor. Number thirteen, the applicant has received all DEP site location and storm water permits required for this project. Number fourteen, the Arundel Fire Chief has approved the fire protection and access plan for the proposed site development. Number fifteen, both the soil erosion control plan and a suitable landscape plan have been submitted that meet the standards of the land use ordinance. Number sixteen, record plans submitted as a part of the conditional use application include a thirteen-sheet plan set prepared by Harriman Associates and dated nine-twenty-four fifteen with revisions to two-eleven-sixteen. All plans in the set are made part of this motion of approval. Conformance with conditional use criteria. After due review and consideration, the Arundel Planning Board has determined the application to be in conformance with the criteria of nine-point-seven-point-H of the land, of the Arundel Land Use Ordinance as follows. Nine-seven-H one, that the use is compatible with and similar to general categories of uses of neighboring properties, the uses and size of the structures is exactly as currently exist on the site.
Motion to approve.
Motion has been made to approve. Is there a second?
Yeah.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. Nine-seven-H two, the use is consistent with the comprehensive plan and the anticipated future development of the neighborhood, in that the comprehensive plan permits such municipal and public uses in the R two district as conditional uses, and therefore the proposed use is in conformance with the two thousand five and two thousand fifteen comprehensive plan.
Motion to approve, second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Yeah.
Unanimous. Nine-seven-H three, that there is adequate and safe pedestrian and vehicular access to and into the site to accommodate anticipated traffic to and from the use. The proposed use will not generate significant trip generation beyond its current use. The applicant's driveway site distances exceed the minimum standards of section seven-point-seven-point-A, and the applicant has received an approval from the Arundel Public Works Director.
Move to approve, second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. Nine-seven-H four, that there is adequate water supply and sewage disposal available to service the use. Existing well water is provided onsite and supply exceeds demand. Existing off septic will continue to be used on lot twenty-five, and the applicant has an easement from the town to use, repair, and maintain this facility.
Move to approve, second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. Nine-seven-H five, there will be no noise, dust, odor, vibration, or smoke generated by the use that will adversely affect neighboring properties, in that the renovation of the existing facility will not result in an expansion of current use and capacities, and there will be no additional nuisances created by the activity.
Move to approve, second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. Nine-seven-H six, that the physical characteristics of the site, including location, slope, soils, drainage, and vegetative cover, are suitable for the proposed use. Very little topographic adjustments are proposed for the site over existing conditions. The installation of a detention facility will result in no increase in the downstream peak runoff generated by the site improvements during the twenty-five year storm event.
Move to approve, second.
Comment?
Yes, Tom.
Do we add stormwater detention facility?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Motion unanimous.
I'm sorry, that was Tom and who seconded it? Is Jamie? Is John?
I'm not sure. Yeah, it was me.
John, Jamie made the, Jamie made the correction.
9.7.7, that the use will not constitute a public or private nuisance. No nuisances will be generated by the proposed use. No additional nuisances.
Yeah.
I want to put additional.
I need 400 of them.
Move to approve, second.
Motion's been made and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor?
Yeah.
Motion's unanimous. 9.7.8, that all other requirements and applicable provisions of this ordinance, particularly any pertinent performance standards, are met. The applicant has met all pertinent portions of the Arundel Land Use Ordinance in the design of the proposed facilities.
Move to approve.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made and seconded, any discussion?
Yes, one.
Okay.
One minor thing is, we, the photometric of lighting, I think that.
Yeah. That comes under condition.
That comes under condition.
Okay. Right. About the light.
Yes.
Yep.
Okay. Motion's been made and seconded, all those in favor? Motion's unanimous.
You're making me wait there, Mike.
Therefore, be it resolved that based on the above findings and conclusions, the Arundel Planning Board hereby approves the conditional use application of RSU 21 to reconstruct Mildred L Day Elementary School campus, including renovations of portions of the existing building, 24,045 square feet of building expansion, and relocated parking and recreational facilities on a 9.59 acre parcel located at 600 Limerick Road, map 17, lot 25A in the R2 district, map 30, in the R2 district, subject to the following conditions. And the white, map 34 is in there.
What's that, new one? Was that a new map?
Because it went through, it stopped, and then goes map 34. I didn't think so.
Cutting impatient.
Subject to the following conditions, number one, no disturbance of soil on the site shall occur until all soil and erosion control measures specified in soil erosion control plan of the approved plan set are installed.
One question for you.
Yeah, Marty.
Do you have any estimate date of starting?
March 8th. Yeah. Groundbreaking is scheduled, I believe, for March 8th.
There's a two-year limit.
Two-year limit on completion of improvements. Before it was done by September.
Way before that, but that's in there.
Right, it is in.
Number three says that.
Number two, no certificate of occupancy shall be issued for the renovated and expanded building until a seal letter is presented to the code enforcement officer and town planner by Harriman Associates certifying that all improvements have been installed in accordance with the approved plans.
Question.
Yes, Marty.
What safeguards do we have? For example, of what had happened to the other Kedemun new school? That, the boo-boos of the roofer or anything else? Safeguards, that's why I'm asking, instead of safeguards, that's where I'm coming in as a question.
Well, we, the planning board usually does not do any kind of bonding or anything of that nature regarding the actual construction of the building, that's in the process of building inspectors, all of the building inspectors requirements, and we will be having an engineer reviewing some of these things. I shouldn't say we, code enforcement officer and the building inspector will be looking at a lot of those things. But in terms of guarantee, this board does not put guarantee in the construction of buildings.
You can ask questions.
You can ask lots of questions, but, but we don't have a guaranteed process on that, that's out of the law of review. And what we're doing is we're giving John the responsibility and hanging his stamp that everything's in place.
No, I'm not.
We'll go to the board about his stamp.
Well, I'm not saying anything with John, but just saying, they had, everybody's stamp was on it, had the new school over there, and then after it was all done and everything else, shit rolled downhill.
Marty.
Right.
I can't, there's no guarantees in my opinion. We try, we try to minimize as many, as many mistakes and as many potential things that could go wrong, we try to anticipate that. Things happen in many buildings, as you know, we've seen it happen on projects that we've approved in this town, disasters can occur, things happen. There's no assurances, that's why we have insurance companies, that's why we have lawyers.
And I do know that that was discussed very thoroughly through the whole bond approval process.
Okay.
I don't, I can't remember all the particulars, so I don't want to start, I wasn't pretending to, but I do know that was a big point of conversation and debate.
Thank you.
Number three, all site improvements approved in this planning board actions shall be substantially completed within two years of this approval, they, otherwise this approval shall be deemed null and void. Number four, a light needs to be placed.
Change. Oh, I, I have, I have proposed language for the light.
Oh, okay. Yes, if you could give it to us.
Okay, so you want to put that in as number four?
As number four.
Okay. A street light shall be installed and maintained at the southerly driveway entrance to the school.
That works for me.
I'm happy.
You want to specify water charge on that, John?
Well, a street light is not a standard water.
No.
Whatever is appropriate.
Do you provide sufficient lumen on the access for it?
For safety.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah.
Because we don't want too big a light, probably, maybe too bright.
And then, number five, any change from the approved plan shall require a submittal of revised plans to the, to the planning board.
I have a number six.
Number six.
That all peer review invoices shall be paid prior to the issuance of the building plan.
Okay.
Just give us a brief word off.
Yep. Old peer review, what was that?
Peer review invoices shall be paid prior to issuance of the building plan.
So approved by the planning. By, so approved by the Arundel Planning Board this 11th day of February 2016.
Yeah.
Make a motion.
Move to approve.
Move to approve?
Yeah.
Jamie, that was you, who seconded?
No.
Marty made the motion, Jamie seconded it. Jamie interpreted it.
Marty, Jim.
I'm carrying on the conversation at the same time.
Okay, is there any discussion?
Too many balls in the air.
Hearing no discussion, all those in favor? It's unanimous.
So you have a bigger bed groundbreaking event coming up?
It's going to snow that day anyway, wait on it.
It was in the paper, which I thought was, I, I thought was just a tad bit cavalier because we hadn't approved it.
I didn't write that one, so.
No, I didn't know that.
Well, I was, I was at a Rundle House of Pizza getting some pizza and I saw the paper and I'm like, really? Moves to make.
Well, I listened that day.
Well, I guess it was an optimism.
Yeah.
What is, what is that?
It was Marty.
Faith, I believe, right?
It is, that is the tentative groundbreaking.
That's the paper.
Look at groundbreaking.
I want to watch him try and break ground on Marty. Go ahead, bring a jackhammer, he's going to use a frozen tundra.
No, you want to have two, you know, the probably two, a pail of sand, you can stick shovel in it.
Okay.
I mean, this is the full size.
Item number two, old Oliver Farms LLC conditional use, a proposal to institute an animal husbandry use and raise domesticated farm animals on an 80-acre farm site located on the former Oliver Farm located at 475 Mountain Road, map 16, lot 12, in the R2 zone, Mark Fanette, DVA, old Oliver Farm LLC, is the owner, applicant, and Alan Shepherd Esquire is the designated owner. What, Alan's not here?
No vacation.
Oh, of course he is.
He's still building.
Okay.
Well, the, the issue is that there's so many full applications at this time, but one of the things that we needed that we still don't have, Marty, we need an inventory of what you're going to put in these, what, how are you going to divide up the 5,000 pounds of animals? We need that, we need to know what that is, what's going in there and.
Well, it's going to be impossible to dictate when you've got 35 head of cattle, which ones are going to go in what day, because it's going to be a rotating pasture, six pastures there, so one day, one week, there might be red heptals, the next week, black teddy cows, one week, there might be heptals. But we just want to see that.
Don't you have your first of all?
I got one.
Okay.
A little foggy at the moment.
Yeah, the thing is, here's the problem, the problem is that this is residential zone and we've got to know, this board's got to know exactly what's going to be there. Because the code enforcement officer cannot enforce the provisions of this unless we have a declaration of what's going to be on that land, that's why, we need that inventory.
Why, why can't the enforcement officer enforce it? It's got a 5,000 pounds, how do you just tell what?
You're going to go out and weigh?
You could look at an animal and tell how much it weighs. I mean, you're not going to do this to the pound.
I wouldn't deal with a pound. I'm not saying that, but that, that's what I'm saying. Two, two, are Highland cattle the only things that are going to be there?
I don't want to limit ourselves because if we put domesticated animals, if I decide to get 25 and a half rabbits next year, food, I want people to have that, sure. At the moment, at the moment, it'll probably just be cattle and pig.
So, so.
How, how am I obligated to discuss?
So, they're, and looking at this, they're limited to 5,000 pounds?
Total animal weight, right? Five animal units.
Too many head of cattle?
No.
Those total, about 2,000?
How old they are.
The Highland are about 2,000, let's say for a mature weight?
No, they're anywhere from 100 pounds to 1,200, depends on the size of the animal, heptal, a red calf, or cow, or bull, they're all different. So, a herd that's grown up, so it's all different sizes, like from kindergarten to college, it's all different sizes, ages.
Are you sure that's not a campus?
It's a campus.
Okay.
I'll remind the board that this is the reason why we have this restriction because it's a residential district, it was originally intended for people wanting to have some domesticated animals, usually horses, or maybe a pig, a food, or some chickens, as a way of restricting the numbers that were in that district for the benefit of, of ensuring that it didn't impact other residential areas. Now, Mark's in a different situation since he's got a bunch of land, but, but the fact of the matter is that this is a situation that you've got to meet the criteria, he's got to meet that criteria of providing the board with adequate information to ensure that there will be no more than 5,000 animal units out there. Question, code enforcement, let me finish, the code enforcement officer will not be able to enforce this, or will not enforce this, unless the board makes some very specific rulings on, on what goes there and what doesn't go. And that's, that's basically why there's a conditional use, if it was just up to him, then he would do it by himself, there's a conditional use for you guys. So, I mean, tell me what you want to do in that situation, but let's make sure we don't make it impossible for the CEO to do his job.
I'm trying to find the reference that you have here, according to the land use table in section 6.2 of the, of the ordinance, it's a condition use limited to five animals or 5,000, or 5,000 pounds.
Yes, five animal units.
If you look at the definition of animals, you're. Right, and that's, that's what I'm, I'm trying to find that.
It is 1,000 pounds.
It's 1,000 pounds.
1,000 pounds live weight, that's how we wrote that ordinance, because we didn't want to, at the time, specify which animal or how many of which animal, because that would be impossible, you would have, you know, a book this thick to describe it all. I can just imagine how many ants if you do it at an ant farm.
To the chair?
Yes, Marty.
Two questions. One, we know he has the land, but the animal husbandry is usually referred to as, we'll say hoggy home, okay? Because you're allowed to have so many chickens or anything else to raise or anything else. But where do we have a definition for farm? We have under farm, under farm, you have to minimum qualify for under farm, you have to have a minimum of six acres.
But that's not the problem, the problem is that this is an R2 zone. And it's not permitted.
Farm's not permitted? I'm using the word farm.
Yeah, we don't, we don't recognize the term farm.
We don't recognize the term in, in the R2.
Hey, this is supposed to be a rural, country agricultural Arundel. I'm just throwing out this.
Yeah, you are, but your question, the ordinance doesn't say farm, we only have agriculture and we have animal husbandry, that's how we, this ordinance divides into two things, and animal husbandry is allowed in that district, limited to five animal units, that's it.
Correct, but that's what I was saying.
But there is no, there is no recognition of the term farm. It's, you're either raising crops or you're raising animals or both, that's how this ordinance makes a distinction between the two.
We own three farms altogether, there's the Highland Farm LLC, Hodgegale Farm LLC, and now Oliver Farm LLC, they all share boundaries. The, the Hodgegale Farm is grandfathered, I can have as many cattle there as I want, it's a shame they're right next door, it's the same zone, and I'm crippled to, can't really make this whole thing work, so I'm hoping in the future something can be changed by it, but I understand right now it's five, but you've got to be realized how hard it is for me to, to farm that property after spending all that money on 80 acres and kind of be crippled when the, when one cow gets loose or a little baby wants to go with the mother, it's going to be hard to get in there, and I don't have time to go in there last soon, a little calf that gets in there, so there may be one born that night that we didn't know about, so the next day we've got a calf, so it's going to be hard to regulate right to the, right to the T of what we have there, however, like I said, we have rotating pastures, and some of them really won't even be living on that property, they'll be going up there for the day and coming back that night to Hodgegale, because there's no, there's no buildings up there that we're going to, really be putting them in, so. Will they have full-time residency there? No. Possible? Yes, but probably no, will they come back to the old farm and not be raised?
Cool question.
Yeah, Marty.
The fact is, Oliver's was a farm.
Correct.
And correct that if it was a farm, was he not grandfathered?
Oliver's was being used for pasture and basically for hay, there was no livestock that was being kept at the premises.
Since when?
In the last, last two years?
Last, all he had up there was chickens, he had no, they had horses and Holsteins up there for milk, and the last two years all he had was chickens. And they did have two pigs.
Okay. So.
So is, is that enough to?
The grandfather, no, this ordinance went through in 2005.
But the forehand.
Yeah, I mean, did they have it?
Forehand, he had, he had more than that.
2005, yeah, they had a lot more, because it was all those.
So what I'm being.
Right.
My point is, if their property is grandfathered and this other, the adjacent property has had livestock on it.
Well, the code enforcement officer sent them to you.
Continuing.
So, I don't think he, if he, if they're.
There is a way. Can they provide any documentation?
Well, if they can do that to the CEO so that it's, he can make that determination, that's his prerogative, but I'm just dealing with what's been said.
Just a handwritten letter from the past owners? That's sufficient.
I'm the wrong guy to ask on that one.
I'm just saying that because it was a farm, and if it's.
It doesn't matter if it's a farm, it's whether it was animal husbandry.
Right, and, and in the ordinance, that's where I was just looking at, the real distinction between agriculture, more on the, the crop pasture side of things, and animal husbandry on the livestock side. But if, I would think if they could demonstrate that that has been a continuous animal husbandry operation.
I, I think the problem might be, if you look at the, this information, the essential facts of this application are as follows, number two, the Oliver Farm property's been used almost exclusively for hay production over the past five years, if not longer, there has been no active raising of livestock on the property during this period. If there had been, the fact that you, it would, you stop using it for the two-year period of time and the grandfather goes away.
Okay, okay.
And that's in the.
And that's the problem.
That's about.
That's a prob, that's a problem with, yeah, because this ordinance went into effect in 2005. Anything that is grandfathered, had to have continual usage.
Yep.
And if you discontinue that usage for a period of two years, you lose your grandfather status.
And we do that with all of the...
We do it with everything.
Everything in town, all of the, I don't wanna call them junkyards, but the auto repair, the other graveyard's that are in town that we have, that we give permits to, the gravel pits that we give permits to, if they stop using them, they lose their, for two years, they lose the conditional use right to continue to do so.
Right, so small domesticated animals would not classify as that? Such as chickens and piglets?
Well, yeah, it could.
It could, but I only have what this says, I mean, this says that there has been no livestock.
Who wrote that?
I don't know. I don't know where it came from.
Well, it's got my name on it.
It does.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Well, you say the essential facts, so I'm assuming that you have something to back that up.
The code enforcement officer and I had talked about it, and we, they have no evidence indicating that there was any use at that time.
And if there's no evidence to indicate the use, then, yeah, it would go away. If you have evidence that can show to the town planner or to the codes enforcement officer, probably, more specifically, the codes enforcement officer, if you can show him that within the past two years, there have been livestock there, and it has been...
It would have to be continual from 2005, you know? Because the thing is that, and I think that he established that with hardscrabble, right? You'd have to do the same thing with Oliver.
Okay.
Because, you know, if there's any break in it, you'll lose that non-conformity status. Just like if somebody, if, well...
To break up two years, right?
Right.
I would, I would say, yeah, because that's, that's how we define the...
You know, the actual problem is in something like this, which is really designed for a residential subdivision. That's what this is designed for. You know, if somebody has a horse or a property...
Right, it's got to be changed, and we're gonna be looking at that. But right now, we're gonna deal with what we've got.
We gotta deal with what we got, until that's changed. And, you know, and we've already talked about this, and the comp plan committee's already got something on this. But in the interim, we gotta deal with a real-life situation here. And we've gotta stay within the, within the letter of the ordinance, because we're gonna have other folks doing the same thing.
That's, that's why I think the onus of this whole thing falls to Mark. He's got to be able to demonstrate to the codes enforcement officer, that, yeah, this has been used for livestock.
And that is from the past owners?
However...
You would have to ask him what would constitute proof of having...
You know, an interesting point here, though, is that the livestock doesn't actually reside on that property. The livestock will be pasturing there, but resides back on hardscrabble.
But it says the raising of animals for commercial gain, so it doesn't say that it's, it's just using the area for that purpose.
Right, but who's, who's raising them, which entity is raising them? It's hardscrabble.
Hardscrabble farm owns a calf.
You know, it's a fine distinction.
Well, this is a distinction that we need to let the codes enforcement officer take a look at. He's referred it to us, and, and...
Well, which means he wants us to make a decision.
Well, he's, I mean, you know, the issue is, and he makes, he makes that decision. If he, you know, if Mark provides the evidence that convinces him, then, then he can send that grandfather. If not, then Mark's gotta get a permit. And my problem, you know, or your problem, I shouldn't say my problem...
Is the five units.
Is defining, you know, when somebody, when Suzie gets a horse for Christmas, you know, or two horses, and they're pastured at the backyard, that's an easy thing to give a permit for, you know? And that's what this was originally intended for. But for roving, roving pasture, you know, for cattle, or for pigs, or for chickens and so forth, it's really, it's a very hard thing to deal with on this level. Just like, frankly speaking, 5,000 animal units, or 5,000 pounds is also not a very effective measuring, a measuring stick, very frankly speaking, because there's, you have 5,000 chickens, that's a huge impact.
Chicken in front of a pen.
When it's a whole...
So, even if you had 2,500, it's a lot.
If you have 2,500 chickens, you know, or, you know, or, well, you know, the rabbits, did you have, John?
Well, we had about 100.
Right, exactly. Well, you know, and it all depends, you have 100 pigs, and they turn into...
Yeah, you're 115, you're 120, okay.
I had, I had 80 pigs on an 80 by 80-foot piece, so you don't need acreage to do that.
No, what you need is acreage to keep your neighbors from wanting to kill you.
No.
And your pigs.
You could be right next to that pen, and you wouldn't smell it, that was...
This is kind of an unusual situation.
People don't understand.
Because of the reason that Oliver Butters, there's only two Butters, and one of whom I bought the farm, and the other Butter works for us, and there, they come home, take pictures, and they help us, and they love us. So, we're not infringing anybody's... I know it's not part of the rule, but I'm just saying, there's nobody pissed off at us, so...
I really don't think that the 5,000 pounds is difficult to enforce. I, you know, I know Jim wants black and white, you know, three pigs, two horses, whatever, but that, you can't do that either, because a pig can go anywhere...
Just all these guys, you wanted a white at this location, and what logic did you give it?
But a pig can go anywhere from two pounds to 2,000.
Right, and this is, and that's, and the problem is, the problem is, the board has gotta look outside of the fact that this is a farm. You gotta look at, this is a residential district. It's a, it says suburban residential district. This board zoned it as such.
But that's why we said the 5,000, because you can't get into individual animals and animal sizes and numbers like that.
This is unenforceable, gentlemen, this is an absurd thing.
This is unenforceable.
No, it is, this is unenforceable, it's changing constantly.
But that's, that shouldn't...
That should act as an obstacle for, for the applicant, you know, just 'cause it's unenforceable. Doesn't mean we...
Using this method, it is unenforceable. Using this method, it is totally...
So, you're saying that this can never be applied?
No, I'm saying that you have an inventory of what goes on that property, that's what you have.
Yep.
So, we've come up with, let's, how many would you think you typically ever have of cattle? You have like 50, 60 total? Yeah, at a time that you'd be breeding?
Well, we're at roughly 30 now, and we need more acreage, and that's why we bought the Oliver Farm, and then we found out we couldn't do much more than 5,000 there. We want to increase the herd, but I can't see ever getting 100. You gotta have two acres per animal, the way I like it, is two acres per animal.
So, so, let me clarify, I might have missed this when you initially came in here. You've purchased the Oliver Farm?
Mm-hmm.
Fine. And that's adjacent to...
Hardscrabble. Yep, as well as Highland Farm, so you bought three tracts only, and all, one after they have all, a budget.
So, you've got an imaginary property line that's separating two pieces of property that you own.
Correct.
Could the property line be abandoned, and what they're referring to as the Oliver Farm?
You wouldn't want to abandon the farm, that property line.
Why not?
It would worsen his advantage, this is per, per lot.
Yeah, if he abandons the, if he abandons the property line, and he's down to have his fine grandfather.
If the whole property is then part of Hardscrabble Farm, and grandfathered, no.
No, it wouldn't be grandfathered.
Why not?
It's continuous...
Because you're adding, you're adding, you're adding to a, you're expanding a non-conforming area. You're not deforming.
Actually, no, I'm expanding.
Yeah, you are.
Yeah, okay, all right, and they're just, they're just...
But that's an expansion of the non-conforming area.
Yeah. But it's continuous.
Actually, if he keeps the property lines, then he already have 5,000 on this property, and 5,000 over on this other property. So, he can have 10,000, basically.
And then a third property is 15.
Right, hardscrabble is...
Hardscrabble, but don't you have, aren't there, isn't the Oliver property got like two other parcels in it? Or was that just one parcel?
One parcel, and the other one's on the other side.
That idea goes in the other side.
Well, either that or split it up, and then you, but put it all, and then you can turn it around, six acres.
Wouldn't it be easier just to change the zoning to let a farm continue?
Yeah. Yeah, how about what the word farm is?
It's gonna take a lot longer than it will to find out whether or not there was livestock on that property continuously for the past few years.
I can find out.
For, yeah, but for us to change this ordinance, it's not gonna happen this year.
Has to go through town meeting and everything.
Yeah, it'll, it'll be 2017 before that happens. So, you'd be, yeah. Well, we've, we've got a town meeting coming up in June. We've met, we wouldn't have anything ready to take to the town meeting at that point. Between all of the other stuff that we have to do in the public hearings, and writing the ordinance to get it all crafted up, we'd be lucky to have it done by Christmas.
But I think, I think, I'm, I'm saying, at least, I'll speak for myself, we, we're in favor of helping out, of letting this happen. I think, I think it kind of belongs in, in that area. And it also meets with the comprehensive plan as far as rural character and everything else. But our hands are tied, too, you know, so we're looking for ways to make this doable.
But the, the problem here is that Tad is asking for some kind of an inventory, and when you're doing animal husbandry, you don't have an inventory, it's constantly changing. And, you know, you're, not only is, is the composition of whatever, like your cattle or your pigs, that's changing. They're growing, they're going out to slaughter, things like that. Animal types might change, this is precisely why we did the 5,000. I think you were here when we did that, that's why we did the five animal units, so that you could have some, some delay.
Yes, but at the time, we were talking about acreage.
5,000 pounds would be that hard, because if you're a farmer, you have an idea as to how much your various animals weigh. So, you'd be able to segregate out a group and say, okay, so maybe it's 51 or 5200 pounds. Jim's not gonna weigh those, but, but Mark would be able to say, yeah, okay, this is pretty close to 5,000 pounds over here. And then he's got the other section, and he's gonna have 5,000 pounds over there. So, I, I think that that's something that would be doable in the short term. But first, I would go find out whether or not the farm was in existence for, and had livestock on it for that period of time.
Well, Marvin and Richard Oliver told me that it was, and I used to hang around there, and I saw chickens and piglets there, and ducks.
And I, I don't know, and it's not up to me to make that decision, that's a decision for the code enforcement officer.
They skipped one year when he had to go to the nursing home, and then Richard came back and took care of everything. So, I think it was one year that there's only tens of them, and that was it.
And that may be, and again, that's, that's a question for the codes enforcement officer. What do I need to bring to you to prove that there was livestock here for this period of time? Because if there was livestock there for the period of time, then it is grandfathered in, and this doesn't apply.
Oh, no, well, I'm not sure if that, it doesn't necessarily apply.
Why?
Well, it'll be learned of what was there. So, if you had only chickens, you only got chickens there.
I'm not sure that I...
You gotta, you gotta go on which side you're on, I mean...
We're on the farm side.
He had, he had, basically, basically, Mark had, Mark had Highland cattle on that property. And he's grandfathered for that Highland cattle.
He had pigs on that property.
If you had chick, if, I don't know what deal you got with Jim on this, but all I can say is that if you've got, if the Oliver's only had chickens on that property, then they're grandfathered for the chickens, right?
Well, doesn't the animal husbandry?
Animal husbandry is the animal husbandry. They didn't say what kind of animal.
It says domesticated animal.
Yes, I know it does, but you're misunderstanding what, what a grandfathered use is. Grandfathered use, because you have a grandfathered use that says I can sell cars, does this mean I can suddenly start selling airplanes there? Or make, or expand it into a, I sold a couple cars, now I can make it an entire dealership. That's, that's, it's not the same thing. Grandfathered for the existing use and for the intensive use. When an expansion is allowed, that's what, that's the problem when you start getting into grandfathering. You know, it's very specific. You know, you're reacting to this, the board's reacting to this from a practical standpoint, and I know that sounds absurd to say, but you're reacting to this from a practical standpoint, and saying the nature of the business is that you can't control this. But the problem is, the ordinance does. It does require it to be limited to a certain amount. So, if the Oliver's had, you know, a herd of 30 Holstings over there, then fine, that's their limit of 30 Holstings. That would make it a conditional use. But if you have a couple chickens, I figure it'd be hard pressed to say, now I can have 30 Holstings there, because I had livestock there.
Now, one question. Fact is, you have animal husbandry as you're declaring it, okay? But sort of the fact is, what size acreage are you using?
Acreage has nothing to do with that.
It does?
No, it doesn't, it doesn't in this zone. This is a two-acre zone, and it is not based on the number of acres, it's based on the lot.
Then how do you qualify each of the farm to turn on to get your farm place or anything else?
Farm doesn't exist, this is a zoning ordinance. This isn't a dictionary, it's a zoning ordinance. We don't have to turn farm in here, except for farm retail. We have animal husbandry, and we have, and we have agriculture.
Then we don't have any farms in Arundel?
No, we don't have any farms in Arundel based on this ordinance. We have either agriculture, or we have, or we have animal husbandry, or both, yeah, both. But that's how this ordinance, that's how you guys broke this ordinance. You made the distinction between the two. And you allow agriculture in the R2 district unlimited. But you limit, regardless of the size of the lot, you limit per lot in this district 5,000 pounds. So, Mark's got 80 acres, you only can have 5,000 pounds. The lady next door has a one-acre lot, she can have 5,000 pounds. Makes no difference.
What if he divides it up into 10 lots?
Makes it a frontage.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, you could do that, I mean, that's one way, and then recombine it later, sure. If he combines it more than, he does more than three lots, he's gonna come to the plane war for subdivision.
For cows?
Well...
Doesn't matter, it's a lot, lots is a lot.
If you divide into three lots, that gives you...
He's gotta come to the subdivision, he's gonna only can do two.
Two, okay, well, at least it doubles from, from five to 10,000.
So, then he's gotta do a survey, and all that's reported in Alfred.
Right, it's a separate lot?
No. Yeah, you gotta have meets and bounds, when you divide a lot and send it to Alfred, you don't give him the, something in the back of an envelope. First of all, the law fee out of the registry, and second of all, and no land use attorney's gonna tolerate that. You gotta have meets and bounds.
Well, maybe I'm thinking, because I combined lots, and I didn't have...
Combining lots is a different story.
That makes it continuous.
Combining lots is, but cutting out lots that meet the standards, you gotta, you need meets and bounds. It's possible more to do that. And, you know, frankly speaking, the easier way to do this is board to, to do something regulatorily about this.
Oh, and that they can.
Well, right now, the board's not looking until June of 2017, unless you, you basically step up the pace and say, okay, we're gonna either do it this year, or we're gonna have, we're gonna call for a special town meeting.
Or it could be November election that's coming up.
Could be that. Well, that would be a real interesting time to have to refer in.
Popular voting.
Yeah, a big turnout.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
I'm sure that there wouldn't be any problem with it.
Could a, could a minor amendment to the R2 zone?
I don't know if it would be solely to the R2 zone, it would have to be in that table, wouldn't it?
There's no table anymore.
Oh, true, I was looking at the old table.
There's no table anymore, it won't be a table, it's gonna be in the R2 district. You already have, you know, if you look at the ordinance, you've got the R2 district already, already set for that.
Okay.
And what you would do, if you could make an amendment to that table, assuming that, you know, we go forward, and we get that, get that approved prior to town meeting, you could have something ready for town meeting if you wanted to, if you had the time to.
I appreciate the board would do that.
You know, but it's gonna affect all of the R2, not just one.
No, right, oh, yeah.
And then you're gonna go into R1, because R1's got the same problem.
But we don't have anybody, we don't have anybody pushing us.
Andrew's in R1.
Right, but we, we would write something that would cover all of the residential...
It's all based on acreage.
But you gotta go through and do each, each of the zones individually.
I don't know, I don't know how the rest of you feel, but I disagree with the comp plan on acreage and the size of the, the amount of property you own gets to dictate what you wanna do with it. I disagree with that completely.
Why, that's totally logical.
Not to me. We've divided it up into different zones. If you live in an R1 zone, and you have enough acreage, you can, you can have as big an operation, a commercial operation as you want. It's an R1 zone, I oppose to any business in an R1 zone. I don't believe it's appropriate for residential purposes. And I, I object to the idea that because you can have a large piece of land, you should be able to do something that your neighbors cannot do, and because they do not have enough land. I oppose that idea.
We can have that argument, argue here.
Yeah, and we will. That's, that, it is something down the road, because we have to address the comp plan's decisions.
Question of that, can the comp plan put the word in, under R1 or R2, whatever you wanna call it, the word farm, and pass it through, so that it's allowed for...
Not, not if there's not a definition.
Well, yeah.
Well, and even if it's in the comp plan, Marty, it doesn't, it doesn't impact the zone.
Well, the comp plan controls everything else.
The comp plan provides the framework.
Well, let, have them make a recommendation.
No, Marty, you, you don't need anything more from the comp plan, it's up to you guys. No, Marty, you don't need anything more from the comp plan. It's up to you guys. It's up to you. They've given you a recommendation. And it's up to the planning board, and it's very loose. It's up to the planning board to interpret that. Or to either accept it, to reject it, to interpret, because remember, this board has rejected things the comp plan has put through.
Not many times.
Oh, yeah, you have. You have rejected. I'll give you an example. Here's one. Scenic overlay district. Okay? When was the last time you guys implemented that? That's been in since 2005, and this board has not implemented. That's, good lord, that's...
Comp plan finally saw it out.
Eleven, it's 11 years. It's 11, it hasn't passed yet. It's 11 years you guys haven't done that. So there are times when this board will implement the comp plan. And as you know, the devil's in the details. We've all gone through the last three years of agony and just doing the business stuff. So this, you know, this board is the implementer of it, Marty. You don't need to go back to the comp plan. They already made a recommendation on it.
What did they make a recommendation on?
They made a recommendation that...
Where is it? I haven't seen it.
It's in the comp plan.
It was approved last year.
Yeah, it was approved in June of last year. It's in the comp plan.
I gave everybody a copy of it.
Basically says that if you have, the larger acreage you have, the more you can do on it.
As long as you can, if you're in R2, that's the way he's telling you right now.
Right.
That's because the comp plan says differently. Hasn't been changed to keep up with the comp plan.
But we haven't implemented yet. But that doesn't help Mark out right now. What he needs right now from us is, is what, this is a, is a plan that's being submitted to us.
Yeah.
So we need to decide if that's viable, if he can do what he's asking.
Well, Mark wants to first explore with the, if I'm not mistaken, he wants to first explore whether or not he's, he can get some sort of grandfathering status.
Well, I would say rather parallel.
Yeah, I would too.
So he's submitted an application. We've got a conditional use. There's a concern from staff, whether it's you and/or Jim, about the enforcement of animal units. However, that's how we define it in the ordinance, is up to five animal units is allowed. And that's how it's defined. So I would be in favor of allowing them up to five animal units on this second lot.
Yeah, I don't see why not.
But without going into a bigger, you know, detailed, you know, six pigs and 14 chickens and one horse and...
Right.
Because that's how it's, that's how it's defined. And because of the, you know, development, growth of animals at different stages, it would be the responsibility of the applicant to ensure that five animal unit, 5,000 pound threshold is followed to the best of their ability.
Your call.
Because ultimately, it's gonna come down, for Jim to feel the need to do something, somebody's gonna have to complain.
And I don't blame Jim for nothing. I have no, I've seen your cows. I think those things are fantastic, but I have no idea how much they weigh. And I couldn't begin to tell you.
Well, they're all bit and signed, so it's hard to...
Well, I just see the ones that are out there by the side of the road every now and then when I head to...
Malted.
I have no idea how much those things weigh, and I have no idea. But to be fair, I couldn't tell you how much you weigh, because I don't have any idea of weight concept. So I would never be able to say, is there 5,000 pounds? I would have to trust you to say, yeah, no, there's 5,000 pounds there. Or like, is it 51, 5200?
It is this from your territory, because I wouldn't be able to give you right to the pound or immediately what it's...
And I wouldn't, I wouldn't expect you. What, are you gonna weigh them every morning?
But there's plenty of people who can eyeball animals, you know, people who work with animals, they, they have a pretty good idea.
Right, yeah. Well, that's why I said, Mark, because I know that...
However, we don't have a code enforcement officer. Who can eyeball?
Well, but I think an egregious violation...
Would be noticeable.
Would be very noticeable. They've got, they've got 30 full-grown cattle out there. It's, it doesn't take a fifth grader to tell you that they're probably more than 500 pounds, you know, or 50 pounds of beef, whatever the math works out.
The only place I think I might be getting in trouble on this is when I bought the Oliver property, it was a section of the woods that went from hardscrabble to old Oliver LLC. Well, we stripped all the way through there to create timber to fix the barn up. Well, that all is one pasture, and some of it is on Oliver's, and some of it's still on hardscrabble. So I don't know how I'm gonna tell some of the cows, make sure you don't go on the other side. So they all...
Have them tiptoe through the stumps.
Yeah. That'll be up to you, and you see them, and they're on the wrong side of the line, go chase them back. Because I couldn't tell you how to do that. I can't tell you how much they weigh.
But the bottom line is, is we have to allow them to have up to 5,000 pounds.
He's aware of the ordinance, and he knows what it says.
But he doesn't know how to define that measurement.
He probably is as familiar with the land use standards pertaining to animal husbandry as any farmer in town is at this point.
You know, and that's, I mean, that's my point. If you can, if you can get the people to say, yeah, I know there've always been cows or whatever going there, okay, fine, then you go to the codes enforcement officer. If you can't, I'm gonna have to take your word for it when you tell me that you're gonna keep it at 5,000 pounds.
I'm gonna have to use the word to be honest with the board, and I'm gonna try the best I can.
Yeah. We can't ask for much more. It will be, Tad was saying, it'll be very obvious if there are 30 cows out there, yeah, it's pretty obvious that there's way more than 5,000 pounds out there. And then you might have a problem if somebody complains or Jim sees them. But if you, I think if you're trying to keep it where it's supposed to be, I can't ask you to do any better than that, because I can't figure out how you, I'm not weighing them, I'm sorry. Unless you can look at the ground and say, well, the size of that cow, it must have been a cow that was... Yeah, no, I don't think so.
Or they're being good.
So again, I hope it's pleasurable. So if you're gonna continue reviewing this, then you need to deem the application complete.
Have we seen the end?
Yeah.
Well, one question. If you can try to talk to Jim and try to, do we deem it complete, or try to see if he can resolve it?
We can deem it, we can deem it complete. And if he's able to find out that there was constant livestock, he can just withdraw the application. There would be no reason to continue on.
Well, no, if the code enforcement officer says that he's...
Yes, that's what I mean.
That's, that's, let's make sure that's clear. But otherwise, then what you need to do is you need to schedule public hearing.
Well, one thing, before it's complete, did we get the one thing that we asked for?
The map, yes.
No, findings are fact.
What?
This from the last time?
Yeah. Our chairman insisted on finding the fact from now on.
No, we have, we're getting a checklist so that we can go through to determine that information.
The fact would be at the end.
That's what we came up with last time. We don't have a finding of fact.
But that was on a preliminary application. That wasn't on whether or not the application was complete. We need to determine whether or not this is a completed addition.
Yeah, on a subdivision, so it's a whole different animal then.
Okay, you know what? I'm gonna make a motion. We deem this complete.
One question. Why do you do that, sir? Because we requested a map, but we did not get a map.
Yes, you did. There's a map.
There's a map in there. And we also, I got an updated map that shows the fence line, a part of the fence line.
Now, can that fence line be, is it progressive white?
Well, your fence line doesn't close out. You did notice that your fence line doesn't close.
Hang on, let's get that.
It's in the middle of the pasture.
Can I reset?
I requested it.
We got that pasture.
Yeah, but I even requested it.
You have to identify where you're recording this.
And then he said...
Well, he did on that, but I mean, next year's, we got an alley, we passed it around.
Holistic on me.
The thing on the map was that the fence...
Guys, we have a motion on the table.
Is it stamped?
Is there a second?
Not yet.
A second for the point of...
We discussed it all with this stuff without a second. Okay.
I got a big one.
No, this is all, this is, it's all enclosed. They don't go to the pasture, they can get loose.
That's right.
It's enclosed.
That's right. Here's your map.
Is it stamped?
And this is what he went on with.
This is your fence line. See how it ends? It just is out in space.
I just noticed.
See my thumb? Here's your, here's the barn. This big curve.
Cow of woods.
Okay.
If you recall, Marty, we said we didn't require stamps already for the...
We have two. I had to have a stamp built.
The blue was estimated, that's the black.
We need to carry it down.
The map has to be, the map has to be stamped.
Because this is the one that you want to get the approval for, so it needs to be on here. This one just doesn't close.
I believe we approved it though.
No, we didn't, because I argued with Alan right here, and he said, I get it.
This is the tile, so that's not a fence.
Well, he would have indicated, well, what was it?
This shows it 100-foot offset from the road.
Yep.
But it just ends there.
It was Oliver's map.
Try to get that.
Yes.
Do you want to take it?
Ted, has White's honeymoon interest been provided?
I didn't give the statement. I kept my stamp at home, depending on what you guys think.
He's got his stamp.
Oh, he's got a stamp, yeah. He needs to modify the sentence. It's not, the fence line, it just ends. That's the problem.
On this map, it does, but here, it closes.
I can't see what, what the hell is that?
This is the, uh... The blue is estimated, what we were gonna do. The black is built. So all the black comes up here, comes down, goes back, and closes in for the other pasture.
Okay.
This is before the...
Marty has a question on whether we have seen the stamped map.
I have not seen the stamped map. All I've got is this map.
Because we, that was, that was something that Marty brought up, and we were gonna have that as part of the discussion.
Show that the map is stamped.
Okay.
Because I argued with Alan right there, and he said, oh, you don't need a stamped map. I said, yes, we do.
Yes, you did.
I can keep the stamped map after you review it?
No, I need a copy of the stamped map. You can photocopy it. I don't need the...
Oh, you can photocopy it? All right, all right.
You guys mind if we, if it's...
No, if it's stamped, it's fine.
So we have to raise steel, get a photocopy, take it over to Staples and get a copy. Draw in the fence line.
Yeah, right.
Because the fence line just ended in a little space, and I know that's not the situation.
I'll take that out, Alan.
Do that. Make him, don't make him do it.
Do you think the board will still be able to maybe get something done for Jan or June in case something does fall through on maybe just having chickens and ducks at Oliver's?
We can discuss it.
We can discuss it. Okay.
Well, so, but even with, at the, at the 5,000 pound threshold, you know...
You can get switched. Well, the fence is built. The fence is in place right now. Gates and everything, it's all state of the art. It's all gone.
We have a motion on the table right now to deem the application complete. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Yeah.
Yeah, we don't have a stamp at this point.
Do we need the stamped map to determine that the application is complete? Marty say?
Yes, yes, yes.
Can I go home and get it right now?
No, because we won't be here when you come back.
No?
Well, it depends on how long it takes.
We might be here.
We would in two weeks.
Huh? Two weeks?
Yeah, I think it's in two weeks. Okay?
All right. Get it to me in a week. Get it to me before Friday. Come on. That'd be great.
Okay. We'll put you on the agenda for next week, because we need 14 days, for two weeks from now.
That's gonna be a brutal need factor.
We'll put you on the, because we need to see the map.
You mean number one?
No, no, no. The zoning ordinance is number one.
Yeah.
So I'll be number two.
No, you're not number two. On Brookside is number two.
Last.
No, you're third.
Okay.
No labor for you. But I'll get all the vegetables from McDonald's, because they're four. You'll get the new one.
All right, so did we ever vote?
No, we, we're gonna, it's not...
We have a motion, and I'll second it.
So we need, we need...
There is a motion. Who made the motion? It was Tom. And who seconded it?
I seconded it.
So Tom and Jimmy made the motion. So we have a standing motion on the floor.
So all those in favor of the motion? All those opposed? Okay, motion is defeated 4 to 1. The application is not complete.
So if I give that to Todd, will I still have to come to the meeting next week? If I give all the paperwork now?
Give me all the paperwork.
You don't have to come.
Okay, so I'll just give it to him.
But if we deem, if we deem this complete, will we probably, will we reserve the public hearing?
Two weeks after that.
Two weeks after that, yeah.
Okay.
Still possible, workable?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, all right. Okay, give me a second. Tomorrow we'll do that.
I'll be there tomorrow.
Okay, that'd be good, Marty.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, now, thanks for hearing that. I'd say, what's the next item on the agenda, because I can't imagine...
Sim is ordinance.
Next item, land use ordinance format. Tad has given us the format.
Which I'm sure you've all spent all this time looking at.
No.
I have looked at it.
It is, it, there were some issues in it, and that's what we've been working on for several days.
No, what's this one? It was in the package.
We found a number of issues in it, and we've already corrected them. I should let you know, but the ordinances aren't even, the public hearings aren't even advertised. Was it advertised or not? 13 days prior to this, it's state law six.
Okay.
What are the, what are the issues of...
The issues were, basically, there was some numbers that didn't match, because things have been shifted again. Couple other things were put in there, and a couple things were missing, and some were... So it's basically references and alignments, but it was basically references.
All right.
Like, go to 10.5.4.
And you said you were gonna check all of them.
I did, and what happened is we made, I had made several other changes, because we left out water supply and water quality, which you guys didn't pick up on. But that's my responsibility to do. Sim is, I've done it once, Sim has done one, Sim's done it once, and she's doing the second one, and it'll be done by tomorrow. Then I will print it off again and give you the final. She's gonna have the final one on file, and I'll post it online, and I'll post you anywhere. But if there's anything that's screaming at you right now, you gotta tell me now. Or if you think you still want to, you want to spend more time on it, we'll postpone it and send it back. Believe me, I don't want to. I'm serious. I'm really, I'm not the best of all secretaries in this situation, but I was forced to be the secretary.
We said we were gonna have a reserved site in here.
On the very first page, if you look at 5.7, it says reserved fire protection.
5.7, first page?
Yeah.
I don't see...
Table of contents, Marty.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, there's, as far as the placement of districts under pay, technically, DB1 and DB2 should be on the mixed use.
We can separate away from the what the comp plan did on that. They said everything was mixed use, but I think you, I think you did that originally. We decided that a long time ago. These are the business districts. And then the other ones were more heavily residential oriented. As you recall, there's severe restrictions on residential in those four districts. And there are, in fact, there's no residential in the BI district. And the other ones, there's no limitation, not much of a limitation on residential. Subdivision, but you can't do subdivisions in many blocks, the number of blocks, the size, and many limitations. So the object was to call out the ones where we have any business, and the other ones were mixed use, where they had a greater number of uses. And this is something we decided a long time ago, and we first went through this.
We're calling a business and not a mixed use, even though they are...
Well, they are mixed use.
Mixed use.
If we're gonna go, if we're gonna take that position, then there are no districts other than mixed use anywhere in town, with the exception of the BI, which is exclusive to business. Because every other district in town has some kind of a business in it, or it allows it.
And frankly speaking, from a marketing standpoint, Jalen, now, if I'm also given the responsibility to make sure that this ordinance is attractive to businesses, I don't want to exclude the term business or commercial district from our table of contents. I don't want to call everything a mixed use. When I say, yeah, if somebody, and I get it, and people come and say, yeah, we, I'm looking for a parcel to do this. When I say, yeah, if somebody, and I get it, and people come and say, yeah, we, um, I'm looking for a parcel to do this, I have brokers coming in, I have, uh, site location agents come in and they say, what do you got, you know, for business districts, where are your business districts? Where are your commercial districts? They ask those two names, from a marketing standpoint, that's why I call them business districts. And, and I think that was in one of the very first outlines, actually, we improved that outline originally. So that's, that's why we kinda stuck with that. I, I was originally gonna put, if you recall, we talked about putting, um, the gateway in there, but then decided to put it in the, we weren't gonna leave Townhouse Corner by itself as a, as a mixed use. We're gonna put it in the gateway and Townhouse Corner as special districts, and they were mixed use. And so we'll put it in the mixed use districts. You'll know, I will tell you that one of those mixed use districts is gonna go bye-bye. Or it's recommended by the Complain Committee that it go bye-bye, and that's the NCR district. Which is a natural resource conservation district, which really doesn't serve much of a function.
That's on the other side of the train tracks?
No, it's all over, it's basically along the river. It's along the river and it's all through the Stone Pond.
Well, what's on the other side of the train tracks? Where it's, uh.
The gateway.
No, I'm talking about behind Kings and all the way through there, you can't get across on the other side of the, cause you can't cross the tracks.
That's still our four on that side, the Complain.
I thought that was.
No, that's currently our four and the Complain Committee recommended staying our four.
Can't, you can't even get to there, that's why it was.
Well, it, you don't wanna put, you can't do anything in there zone, I mean, we're gonna put something in there and it's in our, our four. Um, someday somebody may, might do a surface crossing. And, and the only other thing they did down there was they combined the R two and the R three into one district, they recommended combining the two. But. We haven't driven off that road, off that bridge yet, discussing R one and R two consolidation. Okay, so we have a public hearing coming up in two weeks.
Yep.
On if you, if you agree.
So Ted, just a very, I mean, first thing, I mean, you're talking about formatting, and the page numbers on the very front page.
Are off.
Page thirty-nine, the last two thirty-nines are off a little bit. Do you see that? You should be, if you're on the front page, you should be looking at it.
And that's, yeah, oh yeah, they're supposed to be off. They're supposed to be off over here, but not on the page number. That page number should be paginated exactly the same way all the way down through.
Why?
Why would you?
It's a sub-district, it's a sub-thing.
Right, which is why it's gonna be over here.
It isn't then, I mean.
Yes, but it would not be.
What you're telling me is you don't like it.
No, I'm telling you, I don't like the page number.
That's what I mean, that's what you're saying.
I don't mind this side over here, this over here looks funky.
Well, that's because it's, you notice that it's, it's a subdivision of, of R two, I mean, of five two.
The page numbers should all line up.
You want the page number.
That's what I'm saying, yeah.
You want them to line up. The page number should.
No, we wanted to make it, we just wanted. If you add the, the left-hand side, because it's, so, that's.
That's okay?
Yeah.
Alright.
For me.
Yeah, that's fine, it just, the page number.
Pages two and three, it's the same thing.
Yeah, it's probably all the.
It probably is.
I mean, it's just, that was his, yeah, standard, I, you know, it's just one of those things you notice and.
Okay, yeah. Good that, change it by tomorrow, I gotta get it all done by tomorrow, cause we gotta post the flight tomorrow. You know, even, even if this went through, that's a de minimis change and it wouldn't affect that.
No, it wouldn't affect at all, cause you know, frankly speaking, the, one of the problems that we have is, I thought you were telling me the number of this one.
Oh, no.
Oh, no, I haven't.
The number is off again, cause what happens is with this thing, even though we do section divisions in it, you know, there's, what I would have liked to have done is actually retype the entire sections of this, because there's ghost formatting.
Yeah.
In here. And it comes from the state, because basically, we didn't retype all of chapter of one thousand, we didn't type, uh, uh, the floodplain, we didn't type a lot of stuff in here, so there's ghost formatting that keeps popping up, and you change one thing and it just changes all the formatting, it just is a nightmare. And I think, I think the fact that, that all we're doing is changing the format itself, when, if it, should this be approved, fixing all of the little ghostings is, is a de minimis change and won't, won't require a special meeting or anything else, it'll just be able to change. No, okay, the way it's always written, it talks about, um, approving it and allowing the town clerk to make spelling changes and numbering or numbering adjustments.
I have another question. Why, okay, do we have three point O, I got your pager, okay? Why is ten in the gray? And also why, on the four, thirty fours in the gray, and everybody else in all the other gray areas, you don't have anything?
That's already been fixed, those have been pulled out.
Okay.
Cause originally they were in, all, there were numbers in all the grays, and then decided they didn't look good anyway, so. Cause it was the same numbers, the first, the.
Yeah.
So we pulled them out, that's been pulled out, it wasn't pulled out in this one when I first. Okay, okay.
No, I, I don't know how picky to get. The little minor things, like, uh, all the ones and As and Bs and Cs, uh, some are bold, some, uh, not bold, as we go through, I don't know which way they should be.
That's ghost pagination, because they're all bold on the, on the command, and they don't come out bold.
They don't come out, so.
Some don't come out, neither. I have to physically go in and change it.
And there's a few that, that are coming in really teen farts.
Right, that's the. But we just, those can all be adjusted after, we just need.
Like a secretary sit down, it's been.
Oh, you know what I'm saying, if you change anything somewhere else, it reverts back, it's been changed before, all of these have been changed.
There is.
This is one of the very frustrating.
There is a way to do that, they, they, they get grouped as styles.
Yeah.
And, and if you.
I've overlaid styles on this and it reverts back.
Yeah.
If I change one section, it reverts back to an old style. It's extremely frustrating, it's junk.
It really sucks, I know.
It's junk. Give me an old word for Windows two, version two, because frankly speaking, it was the best word process.
Perfect, um, Windows three one was.
That was good too. No, I had, I had one from before.
Yeah, it was.
Before Windows, it was fantastic.
The.
The problem was that it had a dictionary. Yeah. And my daughter told me, I, she changed a bunch of words one day, because she was spelling them right and the machine was not, so she memorized them. And I was in the middle of typing my, my master's thesis and I found it and it's like, I'm gonna kill this kid. Well, you remember, you could go into your dictionary and you could edit your dictionary, you could see everything in the dictionary, can't do it now. Like a Wikipedia. Yeah, it was wonderful. You could actually get it, you could get into your Win I and I.
I'm taking a hard.
Okay, so. I can't.
I love school today, that's.
Are we, are we good for the.
Just you're saying those.
That's.
I'm keeping up.
Simple.
I'm not, it was simpler and I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna spend the time during the one we spent, and I learned how to do this, this is a secret. I, I gave all of you a copy of the fire ordinance. Yep. I don't think we're gonna get a chance to look at it and discuss it, unless, unless we plan on being here until tomorrow.
Well, can I ask a question about that?
Yes.
This is, uh, is this something that you?
This is something that I, I compiled from a bunch of other places.
All the other ones, you took them to.
And at one point.
Starting point.
I have another one someplace to talk about impact fees and I couldn't find it, I have it, you have it, I couldn't find it on my computer, I, I had this other one on here, so I said, okay. This is a good point to start and we can go forward from here.
No, I didn't get that one.
So just, if you get a chance, please look it over and, and we can work from there.
Rich, I didn't get that one tonight, I don't think, and your fighter.
Didn't you hand it out last time?
Oh, there you go, Marty, you got it right there.
I'm sorry, I stand corrected.
Yeah, okay.
Um, on your fire ordinance, I had a thought along the way, while we were speaking of sprinkler systems or anything else. Uh, do we have, or is there a minimum water pressure or gallons per minute that a house, or something has to, to do, depending on your? I, I'm thinking safety wise, along that line, because it depends on how many floors and.
It, it, it's in here and it references the NFPA standard, so whatever the National Fire Standard says it should be, is what we were going, going to set it to, and I don't know what that says.
No, no, I'm.
And that's what that system would be designed.
That's correct.
For form, yeah.
Okay. It's thirteen hour, NFPA thirteen hour, I can't get it, cause I don't have a subscription anymore.
The way they do that, if you have low pressure.
That's, that's why I'm saying you're.
There's an extra storage tank, pressurized storage tank for emergencies, so that you do have enough water.
Okay, well, that's, because if you're gonna use that as a supplement for that, but if you don't have enough water pressure, I mean, it doesn't do any good to have it, I mean, that's why I was thinking of, you know, like, air pressure, where I use the tires or, in relation to, that's where I'm coming at my thought of.
Yeah, in fact, I asked the chief that, when we had that discussion, and that's how he explained it, you know.
I don't remember, I was at that meeting.
I know.
I don't remember you saying about what, you said check onto it, but he didn't say.
That's how I found out, so.
Yeah, okay.
He talked, usually they're two hundred and fifty gallon tanks.
That's what he said. That's what the user font would be. So it's about the size of your eagle.
Yeah, and then the last item that we have before we get the planners report, y'all have a letter from, I think this is Kristen Woodward. Uh, on Limerick Road, uh, I'm writing to request opening a small dog daycare facility. She has an existing building on twenty acres and she'd like to have ten to fifteen dogs, uh, by day, by, for daycare only, no boarding Monday through Friday, regular hours. She would like us to consider this, I believe this also requires a change in the ordinance.
Is this Mary Bay Farm? No. Oh, it is Mary Bay, okay.
Yeah, Mary Bay, yeah.
She, uh, she wants to, wants to do, uh, she wants to do pet daycare.
Right.
Cause we read the ordinance, you know, what we did for pet daycare, but it's only allowed in the business districts, we haven't put it in any residential district. We, we allowed, no, we didn't put it in our four.
Yeah, we did put it in our four.
Our four. Yeah, but we didn't put it in our, she's an R one. Right. And she said, what can I do? And I said, you can ask the board, you know, that this is a consideration, when they considered this, and this goes back to that whole issue of, what kind of business uses are appropriate in the R one district and does it, is it, can be modified or mitigated by acreage? Or location in relation to neighbors. And that's, that's a discussion we'll have to have.
Isn't that, isn't that home occupation? Daycare, having a.
It. No, we made, remember, we made a specific, because what we have for home, it's not traditional home occupation. And, um, we made a specific ordinance or conditional use for it. If she were doing a couple, that's fine, but she's talking twenty-five, which is near the limit of what we have for pet daycare. So. It's a big operation, that's a real operation.
Yeah, the reason we had that limitation was, if you're right next door to somebody with twenty dogs.
Yeah.
It can be quite a nuisance, but, you know, the fact is she has the acreage and she's far enough away from neighbors, so.
We won't know, I mean, I don't know, she just, I haven't been up to inspect, because I don't, obviously. You know, I can't, I can't do anything about it right now, nor can this board do anything about that activity right now. And that, which brings up the whole thing of even equestrian uses, because equestrian uses, aside from animal husbandry, um, we have equestrian, you know, riding rigs and boarding stables in this town, and they're basically all non-conforming. Cause they're, they have more than five, those that are in the art, in the residential districts, and there are a number of them, have more than five horses. And, uh, and they're also doing as a commercial operation, which is not just boarding horses, but they're having events. You have to teach massage, you have meets, shows, you have competitions, and, you know, this is, uh, this is something that the ordinance does not provide for. It allows you to basically have horses, but that's it, to raise horses, but it says nothing about boarding them, it doesn't say anything about having competitions on, on, on site. And so, we had this problem throughout the town, you probably remember, we had that big one that's out in, uh, on Thompson Road, we have several on Thompson, we have others who wanna come in on Thompson Road and do that. For some reason, we have, there's a big push for a number of new equestrian centers, and they wanna go and come into this town. And frankly, right now, I can't bring it to you, because it's a use that we, is not really permitted in that district, it's, it's different, it's not just raising horses, it's boarding. And, and having these events. And I used to EMT at these things, so they get big, you get a lot of people coming to these sites, so it's a. One more thing that we have to look at. One more thing we gotta look at. Planners report. Um, shitty. It's been, uh, there's a lot of things. Um, there's really not, we have not been very busy on the, uh, at, at the staff level, but we have a number of different issues that are coming up pretty quickly, I have like four room problems that I've gotta deal with, uh, be done at the staff level. And, uh, I had a meeting with Joe today, um, another dry down meeting, so far those dry down meetings are working out very well, the inspections are going well. Uh, it's a very smooth process, we've cut down. Megan, who's our engineer from Warner and Kern, is also the inspector on the site, working for us, uh, she's doing a great job getting, getting my reports on time. And Joe's moved on very well, he's, he's got another, I think, twelve building permits in Jim's apartment right now, so. Uh, in regards to the, um.
Floor cluster?
No, I haven't gotten anything back from the floor cluster yet, but.
I thought that was gonna be a neat little group, a high-end group down in that corner.
Oh, I'm sure it will be, I'm, I'm sure it'll probably be all the higher end house, house models that he's got, but he builds what they ask for.
I don't.
Four units, four different models, and you get to choose one. And of course, they don't wanna modify it. I have not gotten back from them, the condo docs, still. I, we have, I've talked to our attorney, who's in discussion with Joe's attorney. Um, and I've let her know what the board told me, that you felt about the storage units, I haven't told. I, I'd like to tell, tell Joe that too, but, um, she's working with them on that and they're coming up with goals. I've also been working, just so you know, on Brookside with, with our same attorney, is doing a review on that one, and I, I sent her all of the, what I would anticipate, assuming, you know, of course, you know, this, this goes to fruition, that, uh, all of the covenants that we would need on there, on the final homeowners document, the age restricted covenants, but also the no-cut covenants, cause you remember in that, that subdivision plan, uh, we had no-cut areas on private property, and so that's clearly gotta be well defined and, and, uh, well stated in the, uh, in the covenants. But we've gone over and heard of those things, so, so those covenants are all in the works. Um, we've gotta sign some MyLars, Phil came for his Mylar and he couldn't, he couldn't record it, because we've only got one signature. So, I've got a whole bunch of MyLars for you guys to sell, uh, to sign. And, uh, that's about it, I've got for the report right now.
Uh, fifty-five and older.
Yeah.
Are those the same type documents that we have to turn on for, uh, those, like, mobile homes? I can't, I can't.
No include yours?
Yes.
Yeah, it's pretty much the same thing, yeah.
Okay, but I mean, because that was age restricted that way, fifty-five.
That's right.
Is it, is that a guideline for what they need for these ten, ten houses?
Yeah.
I mean, uh.
You can plug that stuff off the internet. Have we gotten those?
Oh, I got one.
The, the doc screen, Jake?
No.
No, the doc screen, Jake, okay. They're still working on, I don't, I don't have a document with us for either, and that's, uh, that's one of the issues, is, you know, you take a little while, but you get done, or else you just. Pretty, pretty standard, I, it gets a little more complex with something like Joe's thing, but, you know, they use it pretty standard. Unless you're, you're gonna get really severe and say you can't put out flies and, you know, vegetable gardens and park, that's the stuff that goes in a homeowners association. None of that stuff is on Phil's, cause Phil's a very basic homeowners association. But this one's gonna require more, because, you know, there are some limitations that they've put on that, on that, on that plan. You know, where the no-cut zones are, you know, absolutely essential for the stormwater plan. And, uh, and, and of course, the age restricted actually is, is a boiler. And, uh, and, and of course, the age restricted actually is, is a boilerplate thing, you can pull that off the line. But, you know, they have, I told them basically that we didn't want, we didn't want kids, we didn't want kids under eighteen, being there for longer than four months, which is, I think, the law. But, you guys can moderate that. The object, obviously, is that it's not used as a means of allowing kids into the school. The big problem that you come up with age-restricted communities, to be very honest with you, is the fact that sometimes with divorces or other calamities in life, sometimes grandchildren who live with grandparents, and that puts them in a situation where they can do that. So that's a real, that's a, that's a burden, but that's, if you want to live in one of those communities, that's a liability. That you have to realize, that's the downtime. If you're going to raise your grandchildren, children are gonna have to move out of that community. But, the thing is that we need it in our documents, so that, so that, uh, basically, we have an enforcement mechanism. If the whole thing falls apart, they decide they're gonna sell to whoever, we have an enforcement mechanism. And, and usually municipalities don't try to push that, unless there's some sort of bonus that's given, we give it a bonus policy, so we have a, we have a, we have a very, very strong stake in this thing, standing as a fifty-five and older community. Something like, we've got a strong stake in, in Northern Des, project that they have, but that's, that's what they care. They really, they control everything out there. And this homeowners association is gonna be as diligent as they are.
Anything else?
No, that's it. I'll probably come up with a whole bunch of things.
Any word on our legal issues?
Nothing. No news is coming. No, the, oh, oh, I, I did tell you that we got, I did tell you that we got an A.D.
Yeah, we're being, yeah.
We got a Y.
It was, it's not us, sorry. ZBAs is being, they had a bill filed against them for their decision and, but, uh, I don't remember.
So, how does that work if ABA, if ZBA is done on the...
Doesn't matter. The town stole, the tasker, the tenant. I heard this one's already signed, that one's already done. That's the only thing that's missing, look at that.
Did we move to a current?
No.
We gotta stay...
Well, it's not a stay and sign these things. I know, I know you want to bail out, you gotta sign it. You did, you did, you did tell them.
I did commit to this, right?
Uh, question for you.
Spread it out so we can say more than one?
We got one on one cable, why don't we turn on a...
How many, how many things you block, Charlie?
Sheldon does everything backwards. Where's the, where's the signal? I don't see one. Where's the signal? Don't wait that. They separate them. Well, that's good, well, that's good. Put a bag in the bag, that's two in the bag. See, this is gonna be easier to talk.
Maybe.
Oh, this one's already signed, this one's already, you signed that. You signed that, but I don't know what's here. Make sure this one's signed. Do we copy?
Bag and give me one of them.
Why are you concerned with this?
We have had, we have a scribble.
Some of the paper you can use, you can open. If you have to go on that.
Need to date that one.
I'll put the date on. I'll put the date of the actual action.
No, you know what, when I try to do this... There was a pen on that one.
That one, that one, you guys, we're just at that one.
There's a scribble scribble.
There's a blue one, Marty, for the paper.
That's what I got.
All right, good. This will keep the folks at home watching on their video later on riveted. Absolutely riveted. You have paper just as important, paper goes in the file for someone crazy to steal, it's in future.
There's sheets there? Right out.
On the side of those two, they don't need to be in the same order, right? You know, for the paper. Hope not.
I don't care when it gets, but when this, one goes to us, one goes to the applicant.
Oh, this is cyclane stuff.
This is cyclane stuff. That's the most important one. No, you got Mark. You've got McDonald's. Which is going here for foreign retail, as you know.
Mark is just, uh, it's a company, it's a application, so that would be...
You've got McDonald's.
Dr.?
No, 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 no. No such law, so no. This is a farm retail. Do you know where McDonald's farm is? Okay, you know, on Route one eleven. This is gonna be beauty, because it's Route one eleven, and it's a partnership between the Tibbets of, of Lyman and McDonald's of Arundel. Where's it going? It's going right between the two big farms there, so that, actually, they're gonna work out the middle of the road.
Oh, really?
And they're gonna raid it, and they're gonna put it in parking and all the rest of this stuff, and they're gonna put it in a farm stand, a farm retail. And the big problem was that they, uh, they had to, they didn't produce on the lawn, on the, on the land, so, so McDonald's is not part of the deal. So they have a cold come up.
Okay.
Okay, needs the letter of the law.
Yep.
And they got a deal going between the two of them, and that's fine with me, I don't care. Uh, but McDonald's is gonna be the, the applicant, because this is like, what Tibbetts is gonna be?
Holy, holy in Arundel, or?
Holy in Arundel, but they're gonna be bringing in produce from various sites.
Well, what end of Route eleven?
McDonald's. The barn, the barn's there.
Used to be Johnny's.
Yeah.
For cat.
Oh, okay. Okay, now for cat, yeah. Okay, now, now I know where you're...
A little hairy when it comes to...
Past western Muro, you familiar with that part of town?
Yeah. Park and that, well, no.
I wanna get, I wanna get out of that.
I wanna get out of the firing line here.
No, I don't wanna get hit by a straight boy. That was a different firing line.
He knows I'm kidding with him.
Hope to get your stuff here.
I know, that's leftovers. Those little little watchovers, okay.
Okay, John.
Okay, did we...
No, we don't have any journey.
What's your journey?
Tom and John. And John, TJ, Ed.
Nine forty. Yeah, I thought it was supposed to be nine o'clock. Yeah, we did better than that.
If we endlessly spent an hour and a half discussing the school.
Yeah, we would have...